Welcome, welcome to our regularly scheduled town council meeting. We welcome you, we want you to feel heard and connected to your town and its council. We want, we want you to feel valued, informed, and connected. We welcome diversity of opinion and want minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing view. So please remember to announce your name and address when you address the council. There is a reminder up there for that. We now have our Teresa Sholander is our city secretary. We want to welcome her. It's our first night. We're so happy to have her, and she will be taking roll call.
To begin roll call, council member Mike Jeffy.
Here.
Council member Pro Tem Tom Anderson.
Here.
Council member Simeon White.
Here.
Council member Brian Vincent.
Here.
Council member Terry Fowler.
Here.
Mayor Tara Sinkovich.
Here.
Did I leave anybody out?
Nope.
Thank you Teresa. Okay, so quorum is confirmed. So next, we had slotted Pastor Jimmy Gallagher, but unfortunately he is, he was carified on Saturday to Medical City, and so he cannot be with us. But we have Pastor Michael Munu who has offered to step in, so he'll be leading us in the pledge and the invocation.
Let's stand this evening and pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this town. We thank you for your blessing. Lord, I thank you that your word says in Nehemiah 2:8 that the good hand of the Lord is on us. So Father, I thank you for your hand of favor, your hand of blessing. Father, we just lift up Pastor Jimmy tonight, and we just thank you for the healing stripes of Jesus. We pray that over his life, and we pray healing over his body, and we thank you for a good meeting, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor.
Okay, so we have a reminder that both Hunt and Kaufman Counties have a fire ban still in effect, so let's all be careful. Even when mowing loose rocks have been called, been told, we've been told that causing sparks which can ignite fires, so please be careful when you're doing that. We also have the know-through truck roads and town entry signs. We're needing volunteers to install the standards. Hopefully after the rain that is in the forecast, the ground will be much more pliable. We have special thanks to Sherri Vincent for typing the town council meeting minutes over the last couple of months. Thank you, Ms. Sherri, we so appreciate that. She's very skilled in that, we appreciate that very much. Special thanks to Leland Barnett and Kevin Sinkovich for cutting and removing the concrete ramp in preparation for the annex move. Special thanks to Josh Sinkovich for setting up the secretarial desktop and the copier. Thanks to Brian for mowing the new town hall site. And Brian Vincent. Special thanks to Tom Cooper for donating his fire code construction consultation services. He came out and told us our occupancy. Special thanks to Longhorn Organics for providing a permanent easement to the town for parking and access as a donation. Special thanks to Roger Hall for donating $7,500 worth of labor and equipment to prepare the new town hall site. And we have a special thanks to Poetry Water Supply, Inc. for donating a water meter and water to the new town hall. Very grateful for all those who've been very generous with their time and resources. Okay, first off, we have under receive reports, the financial report. So we started off at $34,965.79. We had some deposits, solid waste agreement from Card Recycling, that was their $100 fee, annual fee, they paid that. The FEC franchise fees were $13,380.64. Reed paid for his two months, that was $1,060. Titan franchise fees was $1,254. We had a generous donation for the move. It was slotted just for the moving the annex, that was $3,500 by Brett Patterson. Our first quarter franchise fees were received from AWT and CRS for a total of $5,664.50. We had some expenditures, some paper supplies, website. We bought an acrylic holder for the newsletters, so that's available outside at the Linder Library now. We had a citizen who suggested that, so we had made that happen. Of course, we have our Faith Temple utility reimbursement at $50. We paid our electric bill, and then we had a project sheet for $1,800 to Hunt County. So we have an ending balance of $56,740.41. Okay, Catherine Hardwick is here for the P&amp;Z committee report.
What's the trick of balancing the microphone? Catherine Hardwick, 9988 County Road, 2430 Poetry Texas. I would like to open this with prayer. This has been a stressful week. So, Father God, open our eyes of our hearts that we may examine our focus. Help us keep our focus on you. Open our ears that we may hear your Holy Spirit voice. Give us the spirit of wisdom as we try to build a peaceful community together. Remind us that Jesus did not come to bring a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and self-control. Where there is contention and strife, we ask for your spirit of peace. Lord Jesus, we break the spirits of fear and contention that have taken root in our community. Help each of us to examine the motives of our hearts and cast out all unrighteousness. Father God, help us to do all things by your grace, for your glory, in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
There seems to be some confusion regarding the planning and zoning committee. This group of citizen volunteers has spent the last year trying to understand what a comprehensive plan is, what we as a town can and cannot do, and what our county government can and cannot do. Now, we've been accused of being secretive and of violating the Open Meetings Act. Due to confusion and accusations, I suspended the committee Saturday, August 13th, pending legal counsel. We have no wish to be in violation of any laws. This group has given many hours to the task at hand. Just understanding what a comprehensive plan is took months. We have researched many other towns and how their plans are presented. We had in-person meetings with both Hunt and Kaufman County officials, looking for guidance and insight. It's a slow process. We at least know what we want to do, keep poetry poetry. My personal experience was confirmed by the meetings with county officials. If we want to stay as rural as possible, we need to put some protection in place. The developers are circling the area, and they don't do rural. The strife and contention that is apparent at every town council meeting and now staring at us as we drive by big, yellow, disincorporate signs is so sad. I've been in prayer much this past week, asking if I was even supposed to be involved with the town. I moved here just as the town was forming, and I was hopeful that I would get to be part of building a peaceful, vibrant community where strong, family values prevail, and God is at the center. In answer to my prayer for the words for this report, my church had a guest speaker this past Sunday. The title of Brian Summerall's sermon is "The Cost of Contentious Community." Brian made some excellent points that I want to share with you. He defines contention as strife in words or debate, quarrel, angry contest, controversy. He says in a contentious community, we communicate that you do not belong. You're an outsider, you're not welcome here. In a contentious community, one side has to win. Contention needs an enemy to defeat. Contention creates fear, and it is frequently born from fear. When we operate in contention, we lose our witness for Jesus. We become impeached witnesses. We stink up the place like a bunch of junior high cliques. So then, how do we rid ourselves of contention? He had some good points. First, we learn how to listen. I ask myself, am I formulating my comment before the other person's even finished talking, or am I actually listening to them? Second, remember, everyone has a story. Every one of us has a story that impacts how we behave, how we communicate, what we expect, and how we view what we, what we see around us, how we interpret what we hear. Third, take a social media break. At least don't stir the pot. Fourth, try to find the middle ground. And last, but so important, spread kindness. This verse from James 1:19 says it all for me. My dearest brothers and sisters, take this to heart. Be quick to listen, but slow to speak, and slow to become angry, for human anger is never a legitimate tool to promote God's righteous purpose. There has been no intention to do anything in secret. We are a group of volunteers that have donated our time to help figure out how we can protect the rural community of poetry. We have had various issues that have delayed the process, and the monumental amount of documents that we have read and discussed could be overwhelming if we'd been given a strict deadline. Let me state this very clearly. We have no authority. Again, I'll say that. We have no authority. We do not consider ourselves to be anything more than a group of citizens sifting through the mountains of information to present something to the people of the town that can be reviewed, discussed, and amended. Nothing, I repeat, nothing is done by the town council until the citizens have the opportunity to review it and make comments for revisions. This is for you. This is for all of you. We are volunteers that took this task on with virtually no knowledge and very little guidance. If you are interested in being part of the process, assuming we can proceed, we have two seats available at the table. My hope is that you, that we can proceed and that we can schedule a public meeting soon. Because the committee has suspended pending legal advice, I do not feel it is advisable to go into any great detail. But we have a working draft of permitted uses within the town limits. This is in table format with corresponding definitions. We are also close to having a comprehensive map. We hope to have a public meeting where we can share this work and ask for citizen input soon. Thank you.
So thirdly, we have a report that Secretary Sholander is going to read regarding the Local Government Code, Chapter 62.
So this is an excerpt from Local Government Code, Title II, Organization of Municipal Government, and I'm reading Section 62.002. Petition and Elections. A. The mayor of the municipality shall order an election on the question of abolishing the municipality's corporate existence if a petition regarding that the election be held is submitted to the mayor and is signed by at least 400 qualified voters of the municipality. However, if a majority of the qualified voters of the municipality is less than 400, the petition must be signed by at least two-thirds of the qualified voters of that municipality. If the municipality has less than 400 qualified voters and has no municipality debt and does not provide services that would be otherwise provided by the county, the petition must be signed by at least one-fourth of the qualified voters of the municipality. B. The mayor shall order the, shall order the election to be held on the same date as the next general election at which the office of mayor is to be filled.
Thank you Teresa. Okay. Fourthly, we have the Thoroughfare Update by Councilmember White.
Well, I just reached out to Kaufman, and I just wanted to confirm some facts since there was some confusion last time. Just want to clear things up, make sure we're all on the same sheet of music. And I'm glad to actually present some good news for a change. It's great, because originally, well, the plan that myself and the mayor originally saw had a up-to, a six-lane collector coming through Poetry, and it was going to go down, well, it's going to go down some roads, eventually connect up to, to, 243, County Road 243. And it was pretty much going to be a giant six-lane highway through Poetry. We talked about it, obviously, we didn't want that. That's not poetry. That's a giant expansion coming out of nowhere. But they did want to put in at least some roads, so after talking, it appears it was revised, which is great, and that's the copy that Mr. Anderson got. He got the updated sheet, which has now been voted on and approved, so it's locked in for the next three years, the current rendition, and in three years, future councils will be able to review it. Right now, there are only two- to three-lane collector roads being added to Poetry. So the six-lane has been completely thrown off the table because of what we've requested, which is great. It's probably the biggest step that we've actually taken towards preventing development, as of yet, in my opinion. And it's been moved to a connecting road to 34, which is, you know, over there to the, to the what, to the east of us. Yeah, it's been connected to Highway 34. Pretty much, they're creating a giant loop around Terrell, and they've decided to move that loop farther up so that it kind of goes around Poetry, instead of cutting through it, which is fantastic. So there are two collectors that plan to be added. One is connecting FM 1565 to County Road 249, and it's an additional road. I can show anybody a map, it's also online now that it's been approved. And that one's smaller, that is going to be a new road, though, and this is, what, a 20, 30-year plan, so it might not happen for a very long time anyways. And we get to put our input in in another three years. The other proposed road is connecting the water tower, over by the Poetry Water Tower. The road that comes out, that little road to the cul-de-sac area, I know what you'd call it, is going to continue and connect to County Road 311, which y'all probably haven't heard of, but pretty much a road going through that field by the water tower is what they're proposing. So that can be changed. That's a lot better than what it was previously. It's a lot less roads, they're smaller roads, which is a celebration that we prevented it, but also a good thing to keep in mind that this is going to be revived in three years, and if we don't have a good future council then as well, then they can change it to what it was previously or other things. So just something good to bear in mind. This is a long-term plan, but it also means that it could be changed from what it's at right now, which is pretty solid.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember White.
Wait, just to clarify, the vote was by the Kaufman County Commissioners Court, and the plan is only Kaufman County's plan.
That's right.
It's not Rockwall or Hunt County's plan.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Simeon, just for clarification, you say these three-lane roads. I was also looking at the legend. The proposed roads are dotted, right?
That's right.
So collector roads are two to three lanes, but what I noticed are, they call all the roads out here already solid green, which if you look at the legend, they're already considered collector roads.
That's right.
So they're, in my opinion, if it's proposed to be green, it would be like the roads we already have.
It would. It would be exactly like we have. It's an additional road.
It is an additional road.
But it's like we have already.
And it's the one from the water, it's, it'd actually go through Hunt, Hunt Ranch, and I think Hunt Ranch has a lot of money to fight that.
I hope so.
So that's a, that's a huge win for us. And the other one would be, looks like it connects right here, coming off of, well, it's actually behind us, coming off of 1565 and going down there and catching the road that goes straight to 205.
That's right.
But again, I just wanted to point out that these roads are not expanding any of our roads, they're similar size, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember White. Okay, moving on to H, under consent agenda, we have the minutes for the May 17th workshop and regular town council meeting.
I make a motion to move it to the regular agenda for edits. I'm sorry, that's number two, go ahead.
On the seven, May 17th?
No, I meant the June 21st.
Okay, so, okay, he retracts that. So then, for the May 17th one, that one was already, I think, amended?
Yes.
So to include the citizen comments at the end, is all those in favor of the May 17th minutes?
Are we going to do them as a group, Tara? Are we going to do them individually?
No, we'll do them individually, I think, because, yeah, let's, let's pick them off one by one.
All right, although it does say, you know, to approve all items together.
You can, you can, since he already said that there's one of them that he wants to take out, then let's go ahead and do them one by one. So for May 17th minutes, all those in favor of approving that one, and that passes unanimously. So for that, for consent, you don't necessarily have to have a motion, is my understanding? All right, so minutes for the June 21st workshop and regular council meeting?
That's the one that I'd like to move to the regular.
Okay. And then we'll call that A. All right, the minutes for July 12th, special council meeting. Any problems with that? Okay, all is in favor of passing that one, and that passes 5 to 0. Okay. And then the minutes for July the 19th, the regular town council meeting. We did try and include a few citizen's comments at the general end to be consistent, so all those in favor of the July 19th as written, and that passes unanimously. Okay, and number six, we have the amended warranty deed noting a change in the acreage. It was basically because of the new survey, it's one change, 1.3 acres to now 1.14 acres.
Tara, can we, can we move, I'd like to ask a couple of questions, and we can't do that here. Can we move that to regular also, so we can just ask a couple of basic questions?
Okay, so then that will be B, item B.
Do we do number five, July 26?
Did I skip one? July 26th, all those in favor of accepting July 26th?
I'm sorry, which one was?
July, I'm sorry, number six will now be B. Number, number, number six, the warranty deed will now be B. Move to the regular agenda. Okay, so all that, we just voted on the July 26th, and that passes unanimously. Okay. All right, so going on to the regular agenda, so A will be the June 21st workshop, the regular minutes for that, and what, was there something you had?
Yeah, and I may be confused with all the emails we got, but on mine, what number was that originally? That was number two. It looks, it appears in the votes that somebody was absent, because the votes are saying 4-0, 4-0, 4-0, 3-0, 4-0. So we need to go in there and listen to the tapes again, or watch them.
Okay, so clarification on that. Councilmember Vincent was by speakerphone only, and when a council member's by speaker only and not being seen, they, their vote does not, they are not included in the vote, and therefore, that's why it's 4 and 0.
Okay. So do we need to document that up here?
It, my copy does say that, and I don't know if your copy does, but it says-
Like I said, I got a lot of them.
Councilmember Brian Vincent, and in parentheses, it says by speakerphone only.
Okay. That must be edited. And then one of them was 3-0, number eight, so even if Brian was out, we're still missing a vote, or at least a declaration of absentee.
And what number was that?
Number eight.
Okay, so we can look at that and check on that, okay? All right. Anything else?
Not on that, that's all I had on that one.
Okay, so we'll bring that back with, with that detail added, okay? Item B, the amended warranty deed, someone had a question on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to understand, Tara, so I looked at the survey, and it looks like the difference in acreage is from the fence out to the center of the road, is that the only difference?
So-
Because the acreage went up from-
It, it did go up, so, so we had a decision, so the, the survey from the road to, Kevin, do you want to talk on that?
311, right.
And I need to-
Actually, it's toward the fence, the back fence. That's where it extended, the back fence, the barbed wire fence, so the center of the road to the barbed wire fence went a little bit further back.
No, it clearly shows it going to the center of the road on the survey.
Yeah, it's the center of the road to 311, and back.
Right.
And then another, it actually added 30 foot onto the previous, so it made it 1.03, it made it 1.14.
Okay, so clarification, so we went from the center of the road, 311, and that ended up making it instead of 1.03 acres, 1.14, and then we agreed to that, and that's where we have it.
Right, so the first survey or whatever was not from the road, it was from-
1.11 acres, which makes it a total of 1.14.
When you have your survey, we said 311 left to the back, because we knew that was the town, the town surveyor-
Oh, okay.
It added an extra 30 foot.
Okay, and then the other thing that caught my eye was the, the easement change from eight feet to 10 feet. Is there any reason for that? Is that-
So Kevin had originally asked for 10 feet, but the, whoever was typing it only put eight, and so that was the correction there.
Okay. So what was that again?
And that was actually on, so the, what he'd asked for was actually a 10-foot easement for utilities, and whoever typed it up, he'd only put eight, and so that, that is, that is a correction.
Okay, because the first warranty deed we passed, we talked, and you said eight to 10 feet, and I, and I clearly said that the warranty deed says eight feet, and you're like, yeah, eight feet. But the bigger problem with this easement is it says ingress and egress. That would mean traffic.
So the reason why 10 foot was because we had a line there, I didn't know if you had, and I don't know if the easement could fit, and the eight foot without positive damage.
And I don't have heartburn with 10 feet, but, but the ingress and egress easement needs to be removed from this, because it is strictly a utility easement.
That's, that's why you're too poor.
And that's what was in the original warranty deed, and that's what's in the warranty deed that was sent out tonight. It's changed from eight to 10, but it's still, and the warranty deed says 10 feet, but the survey says ingress and egress. So I don't know what that looks like for us to get a survey, if that's just a editorial change, if we provide the warranty deed that was agreed to, and they just go in there and revise that to say utility easement, which was the intent, and that's what we all agreed on, or if they're going to charge us again to rewrite that.
Now, the utility for that certain-
But I, I think what you're saying, Terry, is if it says ingress, egress, that's a driveway.
That's a driveway.
Right, as opposed to just a path that you can dig up and bury stuff.
Well, look at, there's an example on the page, Longhorn Organics, proposed 70-foot ingress and egress easement.
Hey, Mike, here's a bigger one.
So isn't that pointing to the driveway?
Well, it's 10, it's 10 feet off that corner, and if you'll, if you'll read the description on the side, it tells you the starting point. So your, your map dot is just telling you the starting point, that it's going to proceed in a northwesternly fashion, or whatever, northeastern. But the point is, the width of it, we're okay with, but we need to make sure that we take the ingress and egress off. Because then, depending on where our building's in, we may have a tractor, or a car, or whatever, driving down that easement, because it is allowed according to this survey.
Well, maybe in the future, it could be a parking lot there.
It, it could be, but that wouldn't be an easement to the other properties, that would be our choice on what we do on our property as a town. I think it should be a simple revision by the, by byline to say, this is strictly a utility easement.
So, Sherri, to be clear, this wording here, over here, not this wording here?
No, this is, this is showing you what Longhorn is.
Okay, but this ingress and egress easement should be taken off?
Only utility easement.
So it just should say, proposed 10-foot utility easement?
Utility easement.
Okay.
Point of beginning, and that's just showing you where it begins.
But Terry, as a point of order for this topic tonight, I mean, all we're doing is voting on the warranty deed revisions, which are fine, right? We're not voting to approve- We're not voting to approve the survey on this item.
Well, they kind of tie each other together. If that's the, if that's what the council wants, well then, well then the warranty deed needs to be changed again to say ingress and egress. If it's not what the council wants, then-
Well, the way, the way that I pieced, pieced them together was that, on the survey, we could, the survey says that it can be used for ingress and egress, but the warranty deed said we can only use it for-
Utilities, right.
So that's, that's why I didn't have an objection to it, because we, we have the potential in the survey, but we have the agreement in the documents, so. Now, I'm not opposed to having that statement removed from the survey, if that, if that helps clarify things, but, you know, I didn't think we were having a problem.
I just think it would solidify both documents. I mean, to me, it's simple, because it, because it says the reason, it's going to Poetry Plaza Inc. So it just needs to be the utility easement going to Poetry Plaza. Twenty years, when none of us are here, thirty years, and somebody says, well, no, it says on my survey that I have an ingress to that property, well then they're gonna find themselves in courts. If we can clean it up now, and just say utility easement, it's done.
Yeah, if everyone's in agreement, I'll call tomorrow and, you know, ask them if they can make that change, and just reset the survey like we have.
Okay, so we don't have any other issues, we're just gonna, for technical correctness, we're gonna table this until the next meeting?
Well-
When we get the survey tweak that says utility easement instead of ingress, egress?
If, if I'm understanding correctly, Mr. Fowler, we're, the, the agreement is correct, it's the survey we need updated, right?
If, if we're all in agreement, ten foot, and I'm okay with that. I think the warranty deed is okay, but the supporting document being the survey has to be-
Right.
It has to match, it has to mirror.
So that's, that probably could be taken care of tomorrow.
I hope so.
The warranty deed, though, however, we need that for everything, like-
Brian, I mean, if you need a bigger copy, I have one.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I would be in favor of going ahead and agreeing, you know, passing this with the stipulation that the, the survey will be updated to reflect the language.
And maybe at an expense, but that's, well, and maybe not, do you-
It's just an edit.
How does the survey work? Do you hand them the warranty deed, and that's what they survey off of?
No, they're surveying the land.
They had the warranty deed plus-
Well, something would have to tell them that there's an easement there, and that should be the warranty deed. So if this is on them, then there's, there shouldn't be an expense to us.
That's correct, they did have the warranty deed.
Well, then that-
Or what we had with our-
So it shouldn't be any additional expenses to the town.
Okay, yeah, I'll call them tomorrow.
Okay, so is there a motion on this?
I move we accept the, the warranty deed as written with the stipulation that the survey be updated to reflect the language of the warranty deed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned, it's been made by Vincent, seconded by Anderson, all those in favor?
Do we need to open up for public comment? Because it's a regular agenda, huh?
And on this one-
There's no one who's signed up.
Public comment, okay.
Yeah, on, on, maybe it's too late at this point, but on this one, since it doesn't impact Poetry Plaza, maybe Tom should call for the vote?
Sure, so I'm gonna call for that vote.
I'm sorry?
You wanna go ahead and call for that vote?
I'm sorry, call for a vote?
We need you to be mayor for a minute.
Yeah, be mayor for a minute.
Okay, I was making me a note, and I didn't hear what you were saying.
So go ahead, and if you'll call for the vote, since I need to retract my-
The vote on the warranty deed?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a vote to accept the warranty deed with a revision to be consistent with the acreage on the survey?
With the survey being consistent with the acreage in-
Not the acreage, with the easement.
I mean, with the verbiage, the language, the removing the ingress, egress, yes. That, I so moved that, and it was seconded by Fowler.
Well, but we're, now, we're just saying, the warranty deed is only changed to reflect the higher acreage.
Now, the, the warranty deed stays the same, the, oh, sorry, you're right, you're right, yes, to reflect the higher acreage, correct.
And the ten-foot easement, as opposed to eight foot that we initially voted on?
I didn't hear that.
So the initial one was eight feet, so that amendment is being made too, ten feet?
And the ten foot.
But the copy we're approving has that change in it.
It does.
It shows the correct width of the easement and utility-
And it has the acreage on it, too.
In description, and it has the right acreage.
So I don't think we have to have any of that, no, motion, some motion to approve the warranty.
That's why I said as written, so to accept the warranty deed as revised, reflecting the new acreage and the, the-
Stipulation that the survey be edited to show that as a utility-only easement?
At ten feet rather than eight, yes. That's the motion.
Okay.
Excuse me, yes, we have a vote? All in favor?
I didn't second.
Who, who seconded it?
Tom did.
He did.
Okay.
All in favor?
You didn't.
So pass five to zero?
Four to zero.
Four to zero.
Oh, oh, yeah, five zero. Simi, you're being quiet.
Yeah, it's like I'm not here. Don't worry, I'll jump in on some of these other topics.
Okay, on the regular agenda, we have an executive session. In accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.001, the town council will recess into executive session and close meeting to discuss the following. A, Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with the attorney. A government body may not conduct a private consultation with its attorney except when one, when the government body seeks the advice of the attorney about a, pending a contemplation, contemplated litigation, or b, a settlement offer or on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Rules of Disciplinary, Disciplinary Rules of Professional, Professional Conduct of the State Board of Texas Clearly Conflicts with Chapter 551 Government Code, Definition of Resident for Voting Purposes, Incorporation, Research, and Functions of the P and Z. So for this first portion, I'm going to, in the interest of peace, I'm going to recuse myself, allow the five board members to discuss some things, and then they'll call me in. So with that, it is now seven oh seven, and I'm gonna go back.
Okay, so, it's a long hauler here, and you're still here, and you, all right, so we're gonna read the big into the open session and take action if any matters discussed in our executive session.
I'll make a motion, I'll do, I'll make a motion.
The legal counsel, I just want five hours of research, Tom.
I'll second it.
And then just on five hours, or up-
Up to.
Okay, so we have a, we have, well, actually, we have some citizens that want to speak. It's kind of awkward, but, Robin Paulle?
I'll pass, because that was him at the very beginning of all of that.
Chad West? Shelley Smith?
Can we get a summary of what y'all talked about before we do anything? So we don't go fast.
We have four different items on it, so one of them was researching the incorporation, one was solid base compliance, one was the definition of resident for voting purposes, and one was the function of the P and Z committee. So I suppose if we signed up for two, we might, see, we wanted to take this vote, so that's not awkward.
We, we here, we're going to at least give some information on the P and Z, so we will speak to that.
Well, we speak to everything first. Okay, we'll speak to everything first. Okay, so on the, the second item was the solid base, we have a couple vendors who are late in their paying, and so we're trying to figure out what we need to do with that and anything, so councilmember Mike Jaffe has been slotted to talk with them, and they have promised to pay up, so that is slotted.
We can't move the vote. Because we can't take action, and they're still moving the vote.
So, so there's that, and then, because we have citizens that want to speak, and they'll have time to summarize everything, I suppose, then the third thing was the definition of resident for voting. Who wants to summarize that?
Well, I think it, what we've figured out, and we've, this has been kind of a winding journey, is that we cannot violate state or federal law in any resolutions or ordinances that we pass pertaining to voter eligibility or qualification during that, so basically, we're contemplating simply producing a resolution, a statement that says, we follow state law when it comes to voter eligibility and all of that. We, we can't set a different standard.
So on that, it would be the broader definition, so correct me if I'm wrong, but our understanding is, if any part of your property touches the town proper, then you would have an opportunity to choose if you would like to vote in Poetry.
Right, and also a possibility, we haven't made any declaration as a town, and we'll have to inform the all, yeah.
We respond to that.
Exactly.
Right, so-
So we'll give official information on that in the months to come, so we are sort of, I guess, in the process of finishing up the research for that.
Well, and I guess, since we're drilling into this a little bit, the other piece is, it doesn't affect whether you're taxed or not, that has to do with whether you really have property in that taxing jurisdiction or not, it's nothing to do with our council. The council can, can put on the ballot that we want to have property taxes, and we're not planning to do that anytime soon, but it's up to the taxing authorities.
Actually, the council votes on that.
You what?
So the five members of council, now, sales and use goes to the ballot, but the council votes property tax.
Okay, well, we, okay, so stand corrected. But the other thing is, the, the property being in the town which qualifies you to vote, and town issues, doesn't have anything to do with the structure. You can just say, I've got a sleeping bag, and I live in the middle of the pasture, I declare that my domicile, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote based on that. It doesn't have to be a permanent building, it doesn't have to be a surface where footage, you can live in a camper, you can live in a hammock. If you call that address, which we have determined because of our map is in the town of Poetry, you are domicile, you can go down and tell them that's where you want to vote based on, and if you lie, that's not on us, that's on you.
But, but with that, you can only have one location, you can't vote here in the town or wherever, you have to-
It's, it's where you're registered, and I, I mean, it's not like you have to make a special trip to say that.
Well, she did say that, because if your house is behind what we've been considering the town limit, you will have to declare that you are a town of Poetry voter at the elections office. That was the whole education piece coming up, right?
There, there is an education piece coming up. Thankfully, we're not voting on this tonight.
But we will be submitting the full list to the, each county elections, it will be very inclusive.
It will not, it will not be a list of humans, it will be a list of addresses. So if somebody claims an address that is on our list, which means it's in the town of Poetry, then they potentially can vote in Poetry elections. We're not gonna give them names of human beings, we're gonna give them addresses of land, that at least some of which is contained in the town. And that's the, the voting registration process, you tell them what your address is, that's why I'll say you don't need to make a special trip, right?
Okay, and then fourthly, Mr. Mike Jaffe was gonna explain the functions of the P and Z committee, which we also got clarification from legal counsel.
Am I gonna explain that now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna explain that now. So, the, and, and I think all of us understand that we're a newly formed town, a newly formed council, and I know there sometimes is the, the idea that somebody is doing something intentionally that maybe we're not, I'm not saying we aren't doing things intentionally, but probably a lot of the things we get accused of, we really aren't working on intentionally. But the P and Z committee was formed to be a group of citizens with a couple of council member representatives, to go gather information about how P and Z works, how do we sort of get this process started? And according to our lawyers, we could have started by forming a P and Z commission, and then that commission putting together a committee, but we didn't have to start that way, but that would have been one way of starting. And I know there's been, we identified in our discussion, that there may have been in a set of past minutes somewhere where the word commission was used, but that was an error, and that's been corrected, because there's never been the intent of representing the P and Z committee that we have today, as being the commission, they have no authority. All they're doing is trying to go out and research the information about what this is gonna look like, and the council will make publicly any additional decisions around the formation of a commission publicly, you'll be here to be able to comment on all of that. This group is simply made up of citizens, the night before, we asked for people that wanted to join, they signed up, that got kicked off. It is not subject to open meetings, because it's simply a committee, but, but I can tell you, if somebody wants to join the committee, and Catherine said earlier that there's a couple of seats available on it, if somebody wants to join in after the fact, you're welcome to join, and, you know, you're welcome to communicate to those people and find out where the meetings are, if they want to go and participate, I'm sure they'd love to have the help, because a lot of it is not all that exciting work of just definitions and word processing and all of that, but anyway, that's just meant to be a clarification of, it is a committee, yes, there are different ways to, to start P and Z, we chose to start with a simple committee, just to do some exploration, that's what they're doing, assets they have, they are not doing, in the lawyer's words, any substantive work, right? They're not doing anything that's going to turn into legal obligation on any of our parts, they're just gathering information, it's definitions, there's probably copies of it up there. At such times, it becomes binding to us, we have to follow, that will be after the council has discussed it and voted in an open meeting where we'll, you know, pay-
And once it is paid a commission, it is subject to open meetings act, and it will be open, in similar format, where, you know, you get notification, it's open meeting, right now, it's just research.
Yeah, I think, I think one of our struggles is, and, and, you know, again, people can shoot at us all they want, but, you know, there's a lot of things that, that we need to do, we need to form an elections group, and we need to do this and that, we're just, you see what we're dealing with, and we're just trying to catch up on a lot of this stuff, so I don't think, we could have formed a commission, but I, I mean, that would have been like, a little bit over our heads here, but we knew we needed to be preparing for P and Z, so we said, let's get a committee out front to start gathering the information and putting stuff together for us, so, you know, hindsight, as we say, is always twenty twenty, but, but trust me, you're gonna be here till ten or eleven o'clock with us again tonight and hang around, we've got plenty of other junk to work on, we're not gonna do everything necessarily the way maybe you expect it, we are following the law, we are following open meetings, but there's different ways to do some of this stuff, and this one, we just chose to start with a committee. Let me touch on that real quick, because you mentioned open meetings, and originally, I thought that these meetings would be subject to the Open Meetings Act, and that, you know, everything would be meetings, meeting minutes produced, that type of thing, and we just got clarification that I was incorrect in that, so for those of you who like to confuse, I apologize.
And as you said, there is an error in the minutes, it was said four times, that it was a precommittee or citizens' committee for planning and zoning, but in one section of the minutes, it is incorrect, so that will need to be amended, so apologies for that incorrect word there. So with that, I think that's all the things that we covered in the executive session, so Robin Paulle will, would you like to speak then?
Okay, my name's Robin Paulle, address is one zero six five eight County Road twenty-four-hundred. I just have a question about the P and Z part, I know that, I guess it's been weeks now, when they gave y'all the packet for y'all to look at for P and Z, when do you think that y'all are gonna kind of decide on it, so that everybody else can kind of view and see what's in that packet? Very good question, I'm sorry, are you? Yeah, because I know that, like you said, that you still have, this is just a kind of a volunteer thing, and when it actually comes time, then we'll, when we have a P and Z, then we'll also have to get a board of adjustments to go along with the P and Z and all that kind of stuff, so we're still, I'm sure, months away from now. So just more so, when are we gonna be able to see the packet that y'all were able to review with P and Z put together? to review with P and Z put together?
Timmy? The packet we, we received, me and Timmy and Ashley gave to take a play, was just letting them start to digest the definitions and.
Isn't it included with the package today?
Is that what?
No, P and Z gave it to us a week or two ago.
Yeah, it's, it's the categories and things, and then it's also the descriptive definitions and use.
So we will probably have to have a workshop on that. We've been buried under with election stuff and with the dynamics, but in, and we hope to get to it soon. I know Catherine has stated that they're.
So is your ask to see this, is that what you're asking? You'd like to see it? Okay.
There's also an order of operations for this online, although we would love to move on to a zoning document, which would include these two. These are actually only two sections out of several. But we have to first make a, what's it called? The overarching kind of picture of.
Comprehensive plan.
Yes, thank you. We have to make a comprehensive plan. That's the first thing we'll see from P and Z. And I think we said a month, two months, maybe four. It should be relatively soon now to start seeing something from that. And hopefully, can't do anything with this until we have comprehensive.
Well, we can't distribute it, and can people look at it? I mean, can she? I mean, not give her a copy to take home, but can somebody look at it if they're distant? I mean, it's not really that interesting, but it's good work, Catherine, but it's not that interesting. But you can certainly peek at my copy unless that breaks.
There's nothing binding about it completely changed, but in, in all transparency.
I kind of like the idea of more people looking at it. I mean, eventually, the only thing about seeing it clearly is it's going to change.
I was just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't want you to mask or reduce it. It can completely change, but I don't have a problem with you, I mean, in full.
You have a seat on the committee if you want.
No, I don't, I don't find that.
Okay, so, thank you, Robin. Catherine.
Okay, so I get that there's a, a word issue between committee, commission, whatever, but if the agenda, which controls? The agenda item? The minutes that are voted on and unanimously approved? Or the video that is sometimes difficult to hear? Which controls?
Are you going to finish? Because I'm going to wait for you to finish, and I'll answer if I can.
That's a new one. I appreciate that very much.
Your implication is different.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Your implication," I'm guessing, is that they're different.
No, that they were all the same. It was all commission, commission, commission.
Oh, okay.
And then in the video, there's, it's difficult to really know where commission came in on that.
There is audio as well.
Okay, well, we just acknowledged that July of last year, the minutes had the word "commission" incorrectly, so that's probably the video you watched also.
Yeah, but so did the agenda. The agenda said "commission."
In July.
It did, but here's the thing, we amended that, so we were learning from Patricia, because we were all very new. Remember, we'd been in the office all six weeks. So we needed to be educated. She was educating us on the differences. And so it was said four times that it was a committee. So it was first pronounced as a pre-committee, then it was called Citizens Committee for Planning and Zoning, then it ended up being Planning and Zoning Committee. So it was said four times, and so it's unfortunate that in the minutes, there was one typo that didn't say it wrong, so that is confusing. But as far as the, on the agenda, we amended it to be a committee.
Okay, so if we're going to go ahead and say, "The agenda said 'commission,'" are we going to hold everybody to the exact word on the agenda for speaking to you guys when you guys don't have to stay with it?
Well, the first, okay, as, as Patricia explained, okay, she explained that the commission can be made up of the council members.
Now I'm referring to, are we, are we sticking with?
No, let me finish, please. All right, so she was explaining that commission is the overarching thing, but we can do a pre-committee, and that was part of it. So we were doing a pre-committee, and that is part of the step.
I understand. I'm talking about when the agenda says a specific word, and we're talking about a specific thing, okay? I have been gavelled down so many times because I'm one word off. I'm just asking, are we going to allow grace to the people who are speaking to?
So you remember, we had no rules of procedure at that time, and so now we do, and we're trying our best to follow that.
So you'll allow some grace for people to?
We're trying to do the very best we can. We are.
Time's up.
All right, Patrick Smith?
Patrick Smith, 187301565. When was the agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission amended?
It's not. All right, so I'm going to let you finish, and then I'll try and answer if I can.
Okay, well, my first question. My first question is, I thought the mayor just stated that the reason we didn't have to be limited to the agenda, which said, "Consider forming a Planning and Zoning Commission," is because the agenda was amended. So my first question is, when did that take place? My next question is, how did that take place? And you want me to just keep listing all the questions?
Yes, sir. Now I'll finish at the end.
It was contemplated in the July 2020 meeting that the town council could be the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that then there would be this committee formed with five to nine citizens and two of the council members. Is that still the plan, or has that changed? That's my next question. And is there any possibility that the town council can become the Planning and Zoning Commission sometime in the future? If so, when will that be decided? Then based on those answers, I'm sure I might have additional questions, but I guess let's start with those.
How much time is left?
1:06. Okay, so we're going to pause that while I speak. All right, so to answer number one question, the agenda, when it changed, it changed when we discovered that we could do a pre-committee. We called it a pre-committee. And then three other times, we called it a Citizens Committee for Planning and Zoning. So that's when that changed. Number two, the July commission, as Patricia, the attorney, was explaining, the commission is made, can be, can be made up of up to seven or nine members. And we weren't, we didn't feel we were ready for that, because it's very informal, and so we backed off of that and formed, we, remember, we asked for citizens to join, so we had five citizens sign up at that time, and we had two council members also sign up at that time. And we, and Councilmember Jaffe said, "Because it wasn't announced, then we would go ahead and leave a spot for two additional slots in case there was someone else who would also like to be on that committee." Number three, can any, can the council become a commission? Yes. In a lot of, in a lot of small towns, you have the council become that commission. Your timing on that, again, as Catherine stated, we are still in the investigative mode. We're still researching it. We're still very early in that. So, but at some point, when they feel like they're ready for the, to present some things, we will have to put an ordinance in place to formalize that, and at that time, the commission will be subject to amendment.
So is it still possible that the commission will be the town council?
It is possible.
Okay. And how was the agenda amended? Are you talking about verbally during the meeting?
We, after. So after the, we were being educated, because again, we were very, all of us were very new. We've been in office six weeks. We were getting educated by the attorney on the definition of things. We decided to make a pre-committee, because it was, we, we were just, it was like drinking from a fire hose of information, so we needed someone else to kind of digest all of that information, and they're still doing it. It's a lot of work, and they're doing that.
Would it be fair to say that the agenda was not amended, but the action item was through discussion?
Yes, that's.
Okay, so in truth, the agenda was never amended.
Well, once the agenda is closed, you don't necessarily, and again, you don't necessarily, you can't change necessarily at the table the agenda, but part of the commission, the the formalization is the commission. We were all being educated on that. Now, probably the, the agenda could have said, you know, it should have, it could have said three different things, you know, adjustment. It could have said a committee or a commission.
Right, but in, in truth, it did not say that. And the only thing that it gave citizens notice of was that we're going to consider taking appropriate action to form a Planning and Zoning Commission.
So here's my view of it real quick, if I could jump in. That was a mistake. It shouldn't have been so, it was more specific than it needed to be. It should have just been P and Z groups to include them all, and that was a mistake. Our attorney seems to think it's not big enough to negate anything previously done, but in my opinion, it's just as big a mistake as not on the minutes when we vote commission. Those should have just both been more vague, who said committee.
Well, and I felt the appropriate action was to amend the item. We discussed the commission, and we amended the action item to say that it was a committee. So we did discuss, and we did take an appropriate action, which was to create a committee rather than a commission.
Okay. When will it be decided whether the town council will in fact become the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's all those who signed up to speak. So on, I guess on that first item, I think, Terrell, you could.
The motion was to approve legal counsel, and that is on our two, five hours to continue corporation research.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Raise your hands. All right, and that passes unanimously. Okay, so number, I guess.
We have a take to the action.
So, so, yes, so we need a motion to allow Councilmember Jaffe to oppose. So do we have a motion to allow Councilmember Jaffe to work with the solid waste who are in?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, there are.
Second.
Okay, so we have, let me finish the statement. So we have a motion for allow, to allow Councilmember Mike Jaffe to approach the two solid waste management companies who are a month late on paying their franchise fees, and that has been seconded by Anderson. And all those in favor?
Seconded by Benson.
I'm sorry, seconded by Benson. Did you catch that?
What, what item is that?
Under two.
It's under two. So we have a motion by Anderson and a second by Benson to allow Councilmember Jaffe to approach the two solid waste companies who are a month late in paying their franchise fees. So all those in favor? All right, and that passes unanimously. Okay, thirdly. I guess, do we want to vote on changing, I guess, changing the minutes to reflect the proper word on the minutes from the July meeting of 2021 to correct the word that is stated here?
Can I review that before we get in?
Well, can I review the tape?
Okay. You might just want to postpone that? Okay. All right, so the last one is number three. Is that correct? For the term resident, is number three, discuss and consider a resolution adopting a policy regarding who constitutes a town resident for the purposes of voting in town elections. And as we mentioned, we're not quite there yet. We need to amend our resolution to include, mirror the state law, so we're not in violation of state law in any way. We want to mirror that, and, but it will be very broad in that definition, is our plan. Okay, is that seconded by?
I'll say.
Okay, so we have a motion to table this resolution adopting a policy by Benson and seconded by Fowler. All those in favor?
Do you want to be citizen?
Well, we already asked. Oh, that's right. I apologize. So before we take that vote, Robin, do you want to speak to this, the definition of resident for the purposes of voting?
No.
Okay, Sheri Benson?
Pass.
Chad West? Tracy, please.
Tracy, please. County Road 2430. 941 Camer 2432. Okay, so after looking at voting records for Hunt and Kaufman Counties, not all vote counties for instance, our daughter's name is listed, but my husband and myself are not listed. Neither is the mayor's name listed. I'm sure this is true for several people. Also, you have voters in Kaufman County down, down by Terrell. Their addresses is 140141 and 14891 FM 986, which did vote, which should not have voted in the first election. As per court order document 16.626, signed by Joe Stowall, which excluded that part of the ETJ, because it is in fact part of Terrell's ETJ, which Poetry has no rights to per the order. Furthermore, the city map is not certified. A GIS map can be manipulated by anyone, and anyone can do this online. Let the record show, the map was done by an employee of the mayor and not a survey company. Therefore, the map is not certified and should be contested. The map on the order has not been changed to reflect the residents in the ETJ of Terrell, therefore, they should not be allowed to vote in any election. Litigations for this map would be costly to the city at best. You have already been. I'll stop there. I just rested my tablet.
Okay, so I'll speak to what I do know. Actually, the survey has been certified by Hunt County, and Stowall Survey Company did that, and we have a certified map, whether or not, does she have any more time?
She has like a minute.
Okay. Do you want me to finish?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's in regards to the voting records, remember, the elections division of each county makes those up. We do not do, that's on our purview. We don't have, that is on them. So we just give them the map, and then they decide, and actually, what we learned tonight is that it is very inclusive. And so if any, any part of the property is in the town limit whatsoever, then they have an opportunity.
Does that include the ETJs?
If the, if the ETJ touches the town property in any, then even an inch, then they have an opportunity potentially to vote.
Okay, that's not inclusive then, because ETJ people are playing franchises. Okay? Okay, if a citizen is paying franchise fees, they should be allowed to vote in the town.
Okay, so if they're paying a franchise fee in error, then that will be addressed.
We, we can't legally allow people in the ETJ that are just in the ETJ to vote. That'd be going against state law.
Okay, so.
What was that actually quoted?
Nine four four one.
That's not yours. The ones that voted.
Okay, the ones that voted. One four, one zero one, one four, eight nine one. FM, uh, nine eight six, yes.
So there were some errors with, there's error, and what I've learned is there are errors in every election. But again, we are not the elections division. They were given the correct map.
Okay.
It's up to them to decide, um, to get their voting rolls in order.
Okay. Um, going back to the map, so, uh, if you look at the order number sixteen point six two six, that map does not have a certified seal and was done by Dorothy that works for you.
So which map, we have, so which map are we talking?
There should only be one map in the city.
Well, actually, that's not so.
Well, you can have an election map and you can have a city map. Okay, and then you include the ETJ in that map. So the citizens out here that are a part of the ETJ should be afforded the safe rights as everybody else, or that's suppression.
So I agree that if they were incorrectly, if they're incorrectly being charged franchise fees, this should actually be corrected.
I've asked for that to be corrected by council members and has yet to be corrected. The people on Encore are not being charged franchise fees.
No, that is not.
That is true.
No, it's not.
Because TDU fees do not include franchise fees. You can tell me every day, all day, but the Fair Practice Train says that all fees have to be included in your bills, period.
Your turn. So I will correct that. I did talk with Han, uh, with Cindy Tayhan, who has come to this meeting. She was here, um, previously, um, when we had our meeting at Poetry Baptist, um, Cindy Tayhan.
She represents Encore, not FEC.
Okay, ma'am, I'm trying to explain. So she represents Encore and she has said, the way that they do it, they don't put a line item, they do charge for those who are in the town, but they don't put a line item. That is their choice to do so. But they do charge according to whether that person is in the town limit or not. Conversely, FEC does put a line item, so that is also their choice. If there is an error, then we will do our very best to correct any errors. And currently, um, we are looking at, um, at some of that. And so we want to make sure that it's all, um, corrected if there is an error. Okay, so Shelley Smith? We're on the definition of town resident. It is number thirty. Okay, Patrick Smith?
Patrick Smith, one eight seven three zero fifteen sixty-five. There's been some statements made that, in my mind, I can't reconcile. And so if you could help me to understand what you're talking about as far as the town resident for purposes of voting. As part of the agenda packet, there's like a proposed definition, and I read through that, and that's great. Based on my reading of that, I did not expect a discussion about, well, if you're not actually in the city limits, you can say that you sleep in a sleeping bag in the city, and if you lie about that, that's on you and a hornet. For the situation our house is in, where we're not in the city limits, but we're in the ETJ, but our property goes all the way out to the street, would we be able to vote? Or do we have to tell the people at the election office something that's not exactly true?
That's voter fraud.
Right, I mean, that, then I can't vote if I got to do voter fraud, because I think it would have a downside. So can you, can somebody clarify that?
So I think what council member Jaffe was trying to say, it is up to the resident to decide whether not major, what their primary domicile is. So in your particular case, you are back beyond the three hundred and eleven feet. According to what we just, what we, our attorneys have said, is, it's more broad. So you would have a choice as to whether you would want to vote in Poetry's elections or not.
And that's potential.
Potentially.
We do not know right now. The answer is, we don't know.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll know by the next meeting. That's the plan, and be able to get an informational packet out.
Okay, so, so once again, maybe it's better to try to figure this out at the next meeting?
Well, I will read this to you, Mr. Smith. So this is Texas Elections Code, section eleven point zero zero one B. This is from the Secretary of State's office. The Texas Election Code provides that for a person who resides on a property located in more than one territory, that's where, that's where we're at right now.
That means the ETJ one.
More than one territory. The person shall choose in which territory the residence of the person is located. So before that, they decide, they, they comment on statutory residence in context of voter registration and candidacy. And I'll, I'll be glad to share you this document.
Okay.
Secretary of State's office. And this is why I emailed the attorney too, because I think it's conflicting. It says statutory residence in context of voter registration and candidacy. Because eleven point zero zero one is candidacy, not voter registration. Uh, statutory resident is the domicile.
Okay.
So my argument, who decides what the domicile is, that's why all this is still up in contention.
But I, but I get his point. If I have a house on the property and I say I'm in a sleeping bag, I, I get your point.
Right, well.
That should be wrong.
Right, and I'm not trying to be facetious or anything.
No, it's okay.
I don't want to say, oh, I'm going to declare my domicile is really not where my house is so I can vote, because I think that would have some negative impact, so, okay.
I feel like a potato today, so therefore, I'm a potato. No, I'm not.
Correct, well, we, we can agree on that.
We can't, we can't decide that either case law, state versus Fisher, and I'm sure you'll research this. This, uh, the synopsis says, no person, no office, no power outside the court of law may declare where a person resides. Likewise, an election administrator, voter registrar, another election person may not conduct an investigation on where that person resides.
Okay.
I'm back in the sleeping bag.
The truth is stretched of addiction. Okay, thank you.
So that's all of our lists. So, um, we had a motion on this one, I think started, um, can you restate those, please? Um, we have more citizen comments, number three?
Yeah.
Can you restate that?
Right, we table.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion to table, um, number three, um, that's a motion by Benson, seconded by Jaffe. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Number four, discussing considering invoice received from Hunt County Elections for special election services. So they were quite late in sending this. This was actually from last November's election. Um, and we paid actually in advance, um, for, um, for the other, um, the Kaufman County one, and it was quite a bit less. And so it was very confusing at first. She sent a, she sent an email, trying to, I said, can you please explain? And a lot of it had to do with some people dropped out and, um, but there may be some council members who want to go ahead and clarify some things on that. You guys have any?
Well, the way I read it was is that the, because in Hunt County, there's not that many election opportunities coming up for November, and so the full burden of the election cost more of it falls on Poetry than it would if, say, a year ago, when there were many people voting or many opportunities to vote. And so that's at least part of the reason that the cost is high is, is that there's just not that many other elections occurring this coming November to spread the costs around, and they do have fixed costs. And there's other things they pointed out as well. And I read that as one of the key points.
Well, the early voting, although early voting takes more help, and that was the, on the light item, that was the most costly thing. So all this early voting, um, costs an additional, like, well, not completely additional, but it was eighteen hundred dollars just for the early voting clerks. And so that was the largest, or one of the largest items. So the extra of hours, five hundred and forty-four dollars. Um, so, and she said, you know, the, the, um, usually the May elections are spread out with all the school boards and it's less costly. So this one actually, um, was forty-five hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-four cents, which was quite a bit higher than Kaufman, but she gave this prepaid summary.
Did I misread it, or was this for the election we already had?
That was, but it, yeah, it's for the election we already had, yeah. They just sent it late, very late. She's, this was July first, and she sent the explanation, because I was asking, why is it so expensive? And they had estimated it might be like thirty-five hundred dollars, and it ended up being like forty-five hundred, forty-five sixty-one, so.
That's a service that we incurred, so I'd like to hear from the people.
Okay. I know, right? We tried to get a point with the judge to see if maybe it would. Robin, follow.
Robin, follow, one zero six five eight, County Road twenty-four hundred. So I know this is just my opinion on this. With Hunt County, I think it really sucks for early voting, because for one, there's nowhere close to early vote. You've got to go all the way to Greendale. And so I'm, this is just me, I know that people may early vote, but it's, that's a waste of time. I've spent twenty-five minutes driving to Greendale to even try to early vote on a Saturday and then back, when you can just tough it out and do it on the day, you can save a lot of money. I know that we're voting on this anyways, but have we acquired what this year's is going to be?
Yes, and they have no idea. That's what I got. Okay. And it, there's so many factors involved, so it depends on how many other entities are having elections, so they're trying to just firm that up for us. But, um, I mean, is it, is it early voting, is that absolutely something necessary? We have to offer our? No, that's a good question. I mean, I don't have as many other people. I think it's taken time to.
I'm pretty sure it's state law.
I think it's state law now, yeah. But it is very expensive, yeah.
But it's good to get your feedback, though.
Well, yeah, I mean, like I said before, when, back in the day, because of how far I worked from where I lived, I was able to do the mail-in voting. And that was great and beneficial, and early voting never ever mattered then. But then they got tighter on that, on the age and all that kind of stuff. And then it used to be, you could send it in, you got early voting for the whole year for everything. Then they were like, oh, now you have to do it per election, you have to request for it. Well, you lose track of time, deadlines on that, and you need it, need it. So then it's like, one or the other, you've got to drop the green one back. So it's just as easy to vote here on election day, it's close to all of our homes, opposed to us having to say, you know, place.
I can ask that question, I can ask that question of them. I know that we do have a number of citizens that do enjoy early voting, but it is very costly. Um, so it's a good question, I think, but I think it is state law, but I could be wrong. Just something maybe you say to someone, huh? Yeah, absolutely. All right, Chad West? Tracy Gibbs? Uh, Shelley Smith? Okay, the agenda item says that this is for the special elections bill. Is the special elections bill usually the one in May? I'm, special elections is the, the May bill? And then November is called a general election? Or do I have that wrong?
February and general.
If you have a, an election on off-year, but it's still in November, it's still a special election.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha. So this bill that we're talking about paying is for the November one from last year, from last year, so November twenty twenty-one. So have we gotten the May twenty twenty-one bill? We didn't have a election in May. Oh, the May?
We did.
But, well, that is a point, um, the point of May is counties, um, did not pre-charge.
And accomplished.
So, so we're, we're complaining about this forty-five hundred, but they were very good to us on the prior two elections. They put the whole bill. Okay, and who paid for the November twenty twenty-two election? Was that comped also?
That has yet to be.
I'm, I'm sorry, November twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-two.
That was also by the counties. The counties put, put the whole deal for that.
Interesting, okay, thank you. Okay, Patrick Smith?
Pass.
Okay.
So the rates are a good point, that, you know, it's forty-five hundred dollars, but they did cover the last, uh, the two previous elections pre-charge.
Maybe.
Yeah, they were making it up.
Yeah. But, uh, so we, do we have a motion?
That may have just occurred to.
The payer bill?
I'll move it through. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Fowler and seconded by Benson to, um, approve paying this bill for forty-five hundred sixty-one, four thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Number five, um, considering taking action on an order, so the town of Poetry ordering a special election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, to determine whether the voters of the town of Poetry desire to adopt the levy of the sales and use tax for street maintenance in the town, providing for the incorporation of premises, providing for notice, providing for early voting, providing for an engrossment and enrollment clause, and providing an effective date, and our attorneys still wrote that. So, um, any discussion by council on that?
So Tara, I didn't go back and pull the one we did a year ago, but I'm guessing this is a mirror of that one, just changing the date and the percentage.
Well, it was, and I sent that, I, I modified it to contain the one point five percent, um, sent it to Aubrey Mashburn of the Texas Comptroller's Office, because as she, um, we had talked, and she said, hey, send it to me, I'll approve it, um, and, you know, you don't need, you know. And so she did that, and she said it looked good, however, so that language is good. Then our attorney said that they should go ahead and include the fact that it was voted on, the town council authorized an election in November twenty twenty-one on the same matter, which was approved by the voters. So she kind of just gave some history, because sometimes it's important to have a little bit of that history, especially when you have an election that was thrown out, and it was already approved by Secretary of State to do the same election with a different number. So it's been approved by them, it's just that she wanted to have that language.
So is that in here?
So, yes, you'll see on the third paragraph down, it says, whereas the town council authorized an election in November twenty twenty-one on the same matter, which was approved by the voters, and whereas, however, the rate that was approved in November twenty-one, twenty twenty-one election exceeded the maximum rate allowed by the law in conjunction with Hunt County's rate. And so it's kind of explained in the history.
Okay.
So even with that history, the secretary, or the com, the comptroller's office, um, excuse me, I think I said Secretary of State, the comptroller's office said that we were, that she had checked with her superiors, and they said it's fine, um, to go ahead and have it this November, to have the same election, um, but with the appropriate language, the one and not pretend. And we did, she did check over the dates, um, that was something else, but we were very cautious, I would want to make sure, so the election this year is on November eighth? Okay, so number, um, five, Robin, do you want to speak to this? Kevin's given it.
Pass.
Chad West? Tracy Gibbs? Chad Lee Harland?
Chairman, one nine eight.
One nine eight. Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm guessing everybody can pick. So I think I turned it off accidentally. Anyway, Chad Nickarlin, one nine eight five, oh, FM nine eight six. What, if any, financial information did y'all receive from the state comptroller when it comes to estimating income from the sales act? The only thing I've seen referenced was a list of thirty businesses located in the town. Is there any kind of income estimate that you have received from the state that you have used to estimate the income in your budget?
Yeah, I wish. So she was not forthcoming with anything like that because they have to determine, for one, who's in the solid line, the boundary. It falls, if, if you're, they're very strict with that apparently, that's what we did learn, is you have to be in the hard line of the three hundred eleven, four hundred, five eleven feet, or you are not charged sales use if you have a business in that area, I know, unless it's in that hard line. Uh, and then they have several, it's very complex and, um, as to what, who they charge. And, um, so that is totally their decision. Um, with that said, she, she said they couldn't, they wouldn't even be able to give some sort of estimate, um, in the budget, since you referenced that. We were trying to go with towns that were our similar size and then below that. But of course, the, the item on hand right now is, um.
The election ordinance, I understand. So, so basically, and this is probably off, it'll be on a later topic, but basically you were giving no type of income estimate from the state. Okay, um, so that, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? Okay, so have the council had, out of their time to look this over and make sure it's right?
If the lawyer liked it, I'll like it. I read it. I understand your problem.
And I would like to have a chance to again send this to Aubrey Mashburn of the Texas Comptroller's because the attorney did modify it. So I just want to double check. So if he were to, you know, ratify ordinance tonight, I'd like to have you subject to whatever Aubrey says. Is that a thing?
Sure. If she suggests a change though, I'd like to have the opportunity for us to re-review it.
Sure. I, I don't, I, yeah, absolutely. Now, we do have to submit this by Monday. So it could be a specialty if she has, but I, I kind of doubt it because she did already approve the top language. The only thing that, that Emily, our attorney changed was the where it happens, just kind of a little history lesson.
It should be okay. So I might motionally accept, um, the ordinance, might do oh eight oh one, subject to any clarification by the comptroller's office.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Anderson, second by Benson, to approve the ordinance as written, subject to Aubrey, or the Texas, Texas Comptroller's, um, potential approval or and/or revision. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, number six, discuss and consider paying the remainder of the employees received from Hall right-of-way services for the dirt work channeling water away from the pad site in the new town hall and covering the pond. So if my, okay, so when we talked to Roger Hall, um, originally, I was under the impression it was going to be seven hundred dollars. He ended up spending like two additional days to kind of channel or to cover the pond and, um, all of that, channeling the water away from the pad site. So it was a lot more diesel fuel because I think they go through a thousand dollars a day is what we were told by another source and diesel along with the big heavy equipment. So it ended up being additionally eighteen hundred dollars. Um, so I just, you know, he did donate seventy-five hundred dollars worth of, of his time and equipment cost. And so, and I know that our other, our other bugs were very much higher than even, even that. So there is eighteen hundred dollars out there that he would like to be paid.
Mike, just, I'd say, yeah, I was out there when he was doing it and, um, it was needed. The side crap for the building, because we don't want to get into the situation of erosion. And my concern was getting rid of the pond, which was a snake pit, mosquito pit. But on top of it, uh, when we have a heavy rain, hopefully we do in the future, is that there could be severe erosion. So what he did, I thought was fully justified. And he still wrote underneath anything else that could have been done. So even though I thought it was going to be about seven hundred, I do think what we got was still a very good deal all along.
My, my concern is, you know, pass it pretty much every day. Um, he put the pad in and he tapered the sides off and we were supposed to get the, the black dirt backfill on the sides to keep the erosion down and that hasn't been done yet. So I'm a little concerned that some of the great work that he's done may erode if we do get the rains that we're supposed to get in the next.
He does plan on doing that, he said. He would, but he'd have to get, he'd have to get the black dirt, the topsoil. So right now they're select fill and select fill is basically sandy. So he needs to be able to get the black dirt and I think he can get it from the back of the property, the topsoil to put down. And he just ran out of time. He does plan on, he did say, did he say that to you and Tom? Did he say that to you?
I don't remember that, but it, it could have.
So and then also additionally, we're gonna like maybe put some grass seed to, you know.
So my concern becomes the, the, the item that he, and don't get me wrong, I appreciate the work he did and I think he did a fantastic job. I spent most of the day out there with him and he's a good guy and everything. But what he was originally contracted to do included the, the, the black fill and did not include the pond work, did not include the channeling, but now remain for the channeling before the original contracted work was done. That's, that's the concern that I have. I think we should pay the man for the service rendered, but I, I have a concern about the order of operation on this. And it's something that I would like for us to consider in future endeavors to make sure that we're giving exactly what we think we're paying for.
We did vote to include the pond coverage, but we were under the impression it was only going to be seven hundred dollars. That's where, we did vote to go ahead and do that, but we thought it was only going to be seven hundred.
But before that, we, we were supposed to get the, the.
Right, at that point.
For end erosion.
And I think if we would have had more time, if we hadn't been under the time constraints, we would have done a lot more planning work ahead and cost, uh, pre-costing, but we were under such time constraints and he was too. He didn't get his equipment off. So he did what he could do in a quick time and we are able to hopefully get the building moved. But it's time constraint was really important in all this.
So what, what was our original expectation for what the dirt work was going to be? I've lost track. I've got your project breakdown.
For the, for the pond coverage, I was under the impression it was going to be seven hundred dollars, but it ended up being, um, additional eighteen hundred dollars.
So it's twenty-five hundred total.
We did not take delivery of all the dirt, or all the select fill we had scheduled. Is that correct?
We did not, right. And it was, right. So we did not use, we approved up to twenty-one loads and don't use.
Sixteen maybe.
Sixteen maybe, or maybe.
So that saved about eighteen hundred dollars? Six times three hundred and fifty, was it, Terry? I'm sorry I'm doing that. What? What was the, the, the cost of each load? Was it three or three fifty?
So, I mean, his price was, was high.
For the dirt when I can buy.
Two twenty-five?
Well, because he was saying.
I think it's two twenty-five.
Yeah, I was just pointing out the fact that he was donating. My price is cheaper than his and he's in the dirt business. So I don't know if it was a full donation, but somebody got on the way that truck and all that. So fair enough.
So, yeah, I mean, the, the select fill costs and anyway, so I, I think that we're almost going to break even on this, but still I just, I have concerns about order of operation.
Well, my only concern is at some point he told you seven hundred dollars and I'm in business in construction. If I get to the seven hundred dollar range and I'm not even close, I'm stopping and saying, man, I'm grossly under business. Like, he's asking for three hundred fifty, fifty percent increase on what his estimate was.
Well, he said, he said that he, excuse me, that he never agreed to the seven hundred.
Well, that came somewhere. I didn't, they, they told us seven hundred.
I, I did. I, that's why it was, you know, but again, it's way under anything else that was quoted and, I mean.
Well, I mean, that's, that's great, but it's, we're, we're at the point now that somebody's performed work and, you know, that's.
Yeah, I wish he would have called me.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Because we might have said stop.
Right, or, or even let's vote on it.
We could get, we could get erosion match cheaper than that. And now, now it's in place.
Well, right now, the, the, um, the side soil, I guess we can choose to use, rather than that on that.
I wish he would have just said stop. But he, how old were we talking about seven hundred?
Well, I was under the impression that, um, it was seven hundred dollars when it went over and then we would have volunteered done it. But I didn't realize it was going to be eighteen hundred. I thought it would be like, you know, a little bit over. But eighteen hundred is quite a bit, I thought.
So I'm back to the math thing. And maybe you know, as Brian, you're talking about savings on dirt. I mean, what did, what do we remember allocating to the dirt piece total? I mean, I've got a number on the page here that says fifty-five hundred.
I have forty-five hundred. Roy, so you sent it, Reverend?
Yeah.
So I'm just looking at Tara's project sheet kind of, oh, and, uh, it gives what we actually paid versus the value when it says on here fifty-five hundred, seventy-five hundred donated by Roger Hall. So.
Yeah, so that was combined, okay, so combined, that was the total of vote and voices that he submitted, the fifty-five hundred.
I've been trying to figure out if, if we're overall still within our expected budget for this or.
Well. No, I mean, originally, my expectation was it's going to cost us about twenty grand to do this whole thing. That was my expectation, but I don't know that we really even.
What was that expectation based on?
Um, it was actually based on just figuring out like our needs. Um, so, and I was thrilled that, that we actually had Roger Hall and it's such a lower rate than what we had already been given. So.
I guess I'm just trying to recall the conversation at the meeting or come back where we talked about rock and dirt and fire and all of that.
Right.
We threw some numbers out in our meeting and I didn't bring that deck with me, but I don't remember it being twenty thousand. I thought we were approving contracts in the five to eight thousand or something like. You know, I mean, seven thousand five hundred donated. Yeah, I guess I'm just having trouble figuring out whether the extra is a problem or did we just move it from one column to the other and we're still overall.
Tip it from one pocket to.
Yeah.
With the, the dirt work, I think we're going to come out, the, the amount that we saved on select film, I think that we're going to come out to about even on the project. Don't, don't trust me with numbers. Um, but even so, I prefer to, to have, you know, a professional relationship with somebody who, who.
Well, the thing that scares me more, I think, is just there's like nine more steps that have to happen to this building before it becomes our permanent resting place. I just want to make sure we get on top of this early.
Well, that's why I made that spreadsheet. So we did, you would have something.
So we tell the next guy, okay, we're giving you a thousand to start it. And when you get to a thousand and are going over, you need to stop and talk or.
Yeah, and I, I would hope that would be, yeah, we need to clarify that, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, I don't doubt this guy burned a bunch of diesel and all that. I kind of regret that we didn't have a moment in time where we could say, you know, I will spend it for the box player or something. I don't, that's being a little absurd, but.
Well, pond.
Rather than spending money on this company.
Okay, I, I don't want to get bogged down in this, um, because we got, it's still early in our agenda. So I just want to make sure that, um, okay, so Robin Polo?
Robin Polo, one zero six five eight, County Road twenty-four hundred. So, yeah, like you said, he still has to do some of the black fill and all that. And so is that still going to be extra now?
That was part of the original, the, um, the original one that he.
Okay, so something else that I think would help with the citizens being more, I guess I'd say trustworthy or if, so like, for example, like when he gave you a quote of whatever on this, it is crucial and kind of from a construction background to have all of that documented. Because then it's there for open reference and then it matches up with what your employees is. And then you have something to say, hey, this isn't what you originally gave me and now we've got all this extra cost. And kind of like you brought up, we still have nine steps to go. And all these other nine steps we have that we've been given quotes on that this is what it's going to cost to do that. Do we have all of that in documentation so that we can hold them accountable to the pricing that they gave us? Or if something unexpected comes up, then we've got something to at least kind of hold the basics down to for cost wise?
It seems to depend on the contractor. Okay, so Encore will give that, Jim Adams, engineer, who he gave that. Um, it depends on who's doing that because certainly, um.
Right, like for example, I'll put the, the guy that, I know it's not third party, but like for example, the, the building, how it's, it's taking a little bit longer. So I'm just saying, you know, we bidded that for the, that specific contractor to do dirt work and move the building. We want to be able to hold them accountable for what they're price quoting us, even if it takes an extra two or three hours. So that, because like I had stressed before, this whole process can get super, super pricey. Out of control, before you know it, just found little tidbits like that. And before you know it, we've spent an extra thirty to fifty thousand dollars easy moving. If something like that keeps deep rolling on the maybe next time, says that we have, we don't have something in.
When he says nine, sorry. So when he says nine says, I'm not, we have documented here. I will tell you, okay, so we have Encore. I'm still waiting. We've got to get that survey amended, nine-one-one address made. Um, and then we can get the Encore. We don't anticipate it being over a thousand, but they will give that in writing over that.
Some of these, some of these contractors, the inside, yes. Um, I wish that he would have, he gave the other one in writing, but this, you know, he was out in the field and it was kind of, you know, time is the essence thing. Um, and so that wasn't in writing and that's shot, shot is in both there. So, and like I said.
But yeah, no, I totally agree with what you're saying.
I'm just, um, from what I experience day to day, I see tons of people, commercial, all that people get, have the same kind of situation happen to them because they don't have their stuff documented and in writing. And for us being a small town, every dollar matters.
Yeah, I agree. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Robin. All right, Kevin's the finish.
Kevin, six eight one one zero nine zero, Sierra twenty-four hundred. Um, not judging one way or another, but what, what basically I think happened, when we started working on the pond, um, they had water and it looked like it was about six inches deep. Richard Dosh had dug that thing out last year, two years ago and it was about eight foot deep. So I think the, I think he sort of turned to, you guys or somebody was we drink, are they going to use the sand that we still have left or we just couldn't use a little bit of dirt that was in the back there? It wasn't enough. So he actually brought trucks up and they made a lot more donating dirt. And he made trucks back and forth getting dirt, head running his equipment down there, load the trucks and then bring it down and then dump it and load it back. And so there was, there was a lot of back and forth. But like, so not judging one way or another, but he put a lot more into it because it wasn't a six inch deep pond. It was like a eight foot deep pond. So.
Yeah, so at that point, you probably should have asked us in writing. Yeah, so at that point, you probably should've asked us in writing. All right, Chad West.
All right, Tracy Hibbs.
Tracy Hibbs, nine four four one, County Road twenty-four thirty-two. Okay, so my best estimate on this town hall is well over two hundred thousand dollars. So if you're piecing building it out to individual contractors, you have to get bids for that. You cannot hit one lump sum. Once all this is completed, the owner of this property will have an estimated over two hundred thousand in improvements, and in one or while, the town doesn't have trust. The state of Texas recognizes this as P.O. Code Title Eight, offense against public administration, Chapter Twenty-Six, bribery and corruption influence.
I'm gonna stop you right there. Okay, so we, we have addressed this in the previous meeting, I don't think you were there, so the property, um, any improvements in the warranty automatically, if the town no longer exists, would automatically go back to the town? So any improvements would go back to the town?
We can't go back there.
So, we're giving up a property.
Is it brain clear to the city?
Yes, ma'am, this has been addressed, it is brain clear.
It's not brain clear, but has restrictions.
It is brain clear.
Not if it has restrictions.
There's a easement access, but you know what, so this has been addressed.
I'm gonna take my time back if y'all don't mind, let me finish my statement. All of it, all three minutes.
No, I think she's already done.
You interrupted me, I want my three minutes back.
She was given instruction to stop you when I started talking.
Vincent?
You, you will have your full three minutes, you just will not have it continuously.
All right, that's fine.
I pause it every time someone from the council or the mayor speaks.
Okay, that's fine. All right, because the city does not have an unrestricted deed to the property, and the property can be returned to its original owners or heirs, the improvements to the property the city does not own is considered an offense against public administration and corrupt influence. The influence of the owner of said property is an elected official, they do not and cannot accept improvements to property owned or deemed restricted where said improvements will occur by city funds and/or donations for the purpose of city use. As of now, I ask that all the funds be restored to the city of property in the amount of monetary value from the owners of this property for the work that has been done and completed to date. It's one thing to try to influence people into thinking a certain way, but it is another thing to influence those unsuspecting of nefarious acts by an elected official for personal gain. Ignorance of the law is no excuse. No, don't ask me. Good to drop, and you can be held liable.
So this has been vetted by the attorneys, and as well as I. Shelley Smith.
Yes.
Patrick Smith.
All right.
Okay. All right. All right, so number six, do, is it leaving a motion?
I'll make a motion, we pay the additional eighteen hundred dollars to Roger for the additional work on the side crack at the side of the building annex.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Anderson, seconded by, uh, White, to go ahead and pay the all Rodneyville services for the additional dirt work of eighteen hundred dollars. All those in favor? And that passes, um, you abstain or you?
I'm a no.
A no, okay, so passes four to one.
I'm a no.
You're a no, okay, so three to two, it passes. All right, number seven.
Just for the record, I, I, I don't, I think we should pay people for what they do, I'm just struggling with, you know, we gotta kinda manage these costs, and so I'm just, I'm not sure I recognize all that. So we have to put out, but I'm.
I'm struggling with that same thought, but I'm not with.
I don't feel like, I'm not sure that he did anything wrong if we didn't have a conversation with him, but so I feel like he's over the money and he's gonna get paid three of his votes just, but I'm just, I keep thinking we're gonna revisit this.
He's moving a thousand dollars in the other bid. Nothing to be discounted. He's moving a thousand dollars.
But he did more, remember, he had to take the work, the dirt all the way from the back to Longhorn back to cover that, that pond.
H R Dirtwork was across then as well.
It wasn't the pond, it didn't include the pond.
I'm just saying, it's.
H R Dirtwork was only due in the pad site, and that was moving the dirt from Longhorn and doing some select build just for the pad, that was eleven-five just for the pad, it wasn't including the pond.
Well, but I, I think the other thing I'm, I'm taking note of here is we do need to be careful, this appointment's made, that, you know, in the end, this is gonna cost a certain amount of money, and sort of, we don't wanna give the appearance that we're going around the process by approving a few hundred dollars at a time, me like my wife, you know, me going to her and saying, I wanna start a new hobby, it's only fifty dollars, and then it's five hundred, and it's a thousand, the end year I'll spend a quarter of a thousand, you know, quarter million dollars on the hobby, and it's like, okay.
Yes.
So I think we need to be cognizant of that. I know your, your plan, I, I noticed it's, uh, it's missing moving in the building, we need to put together a plan that's realistic and has all the actual numbers, so.
It's missing sprinklers, it's missing ADA access, accommodations.
Okay, so any of the council members can add to this if they would like, okay, so we're just getting a prelim, this is just preliminary, so the thirty-five hundred dollars was donated by Brett Anders, uh, Patterson, um, and that is, um, so on this spreadsheet, I can go ahead and say this, we have a value, estimated value to the town, debt-free, of a hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred dollars.
That's not it.
So, um, okay.
Yeah, anyway.
All right, so this is passed, we're gonna pay our bills, yes, lesson learned, we need to make sure that they're gonna send, um, each additional change to the, um, to the council. All right, so number seven, discussion consider town hall hours in which town hall will be open to the public at the temporary town hall site at one nine zero one two F M nine eight six, on Wednesdays and Thursdays from twelve to four, um, P M. Um, and with that, there's some doctor's appointments that were pre-scheduled three months ago, so that would be beginning August thirty-first, um, and then we just found that out this week, so we'll need to amend that to say beginning August thirty-first.
So Tara, does this, my initial question here would be, does this affect our budgeted amount for paying her, I mean, I guess you're gonna be doing there what you would do from home and fill us an hourly rate for, so.
Well, she's actually working at the site anyway, um, with the laptop and the desktop, um, computer at the site, so, um, now during the council week, so she spent five hours yesterday onsite, um, making the packets that you all see, um, messing with the coffee room that was, um, given us bits, and then, um, being here tonight, so for this week, they would only, she would only have maybe what, three or four hours left, so that would mean council members filling that slot, if, um, so, so if she only had three, because she can only work a maximum of fourteen hours, um, per week, um, according to, um, her requirements, and so, um, we would have to have a council member step in, um, on like a, you know, our council meetings are long, so that takes time, so we would have to, unless we change the hours to be, amend the hours to be something less, on the weeks that we have a four or five hour council meeting, she would run out of hours.
I guess my, my focus would be on her doing the secret chair of duties, not necessarily sitting in the building waiting for the.
Oh, there's not sitting, there is constant work that has to be done, she's constantly busy while she's there, she has the wifi, um, she's on the wifi, and she's constantly busy, so it wouldn't be, maybe that in your mind looks like if she's just sitting there and gets none of that.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I'm not accusing her.
There is actually more work than fourteen hours a week, but I'm grateful I've got to have any help, and so, um, she is constantly busy during that time.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that nothing about her being there for eight hours a week busts our budget, that's all.
Gotcha, now with that said, in the weeks that we have a council meeting, she would run out of hours potentially, so it would need to be managed by myself or a council member in that case, if we stayed with the, you know, the eight hours, or we could amend it if you want, we could say, you know, twelve to two Monday or two to four on Thursday or something.
You know, I guess I'd say, Teresa's just been working the last couple of weeks, why don't we put this off till next meeting? Cause we'll have a little better idea of what she can do and timing, and I don't think we need to.
Well, the building's on wheels right now, and anybody's gonna be in the building with it.
Well, according to the Open Meetings Act, we, we are supposed to have some slotted hours, and that's why this is on this agenda.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just saying, why don't we, well, next week, next meeting, when we have a little more information about what we can do, and we have a new building hopefully set up, and so, we have, and we need a better position to discuss it.
When you say covered by another councilman, you mean there has to be councilman or mayor in the building during that full time?
Certainly, there may be someone there. Or it's have to be open.
I'm not doing that.
Okay, we're on, because the building's on parks or wheels, and then we gotta get set.
Well, I mean.
When utilities are kind of set, ADA access.
Okay, so the temp, here's what Emily said, we need to go ahead and get our town hours associated, because for Open Meetings Act, we have to have an open time that the public can come in and look at documents, that is critical.
Twelve in to twelve out.
So we can just say, we can, we can just make it one day, but we need to have some sort of something.
But we don't have ADA access, we can't have people look at it.
No, absolutely.
We will have it.
Right now, that's temporary town hall, there's double doors.
The temporary.
This is for the temporary.
It's on wheels.
This is a.
Tara, would you like to disclose where the temporary town hall, where the address is?
That's, that's, okay, so a temp, a temporary, we have a donated desk, we have donated one, it's a tab.
Which we take and add.
Yeah, so we have a temporary area where we have a donated desk, we have an office set up there.
I'm assuming that we're talking about where it's sitting right now.
Oh, 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 that, I can, sorry, that is a, that's the front office.
Okay, so Tom, you, you were hitting at a motion to table, do we have public input on this before we vote?
We do, um, so, Robin. Robin Polo, one zero six seven, County Road twenty-four hundred. Harris, right on this, about that you gotta have some hours to be able to go and view documents, um, I know that, how y'all have it set up, but also, you know, you can email from the open records, but the public is also supposed to be able to, and request that in person if they choose, um, and it's at that time of big grant, you know, they have to have time to do the research, and you're like, well, you can come back at some and so time, and we're open after we've had that time of research, but you have to give people that time. It can be, like she said, maybe two hours on one day, but you have to have that available at some point during the week, no matter how small.
You said it to help quickly, because Emily was saying that we need to have that.
Yes.
And it should've started earlier, probably, yeah, so, okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Kevin Siglish?
Yes.
Chad West?
One nine zero one two is about public facility, I think you have a conflict of interest that you're doing town business at business owned by there.
It is, okay, so it is an exclusive use office, which is exclusively used for all the town business.
But it's still on property of the.
It doesn't matter, it's exclusive, as long as you have an exclusive use, and that was kind of like, we need a town, a building, a town building, but as long as that.
And that's governed by what statute code resolution?
I don't have that, but an exclusive use, so as long as it's exclusively used by the town for business, then it is acceptable, is my understanding.
I guess we disagree.
Shelley Smith?
Yes.
Um, Chad, uh, Patrick Smith?
All right.
Okay, so.
Can I bring to the question, is that, is that locked from the inside?
It is locked from the outside.
Who has access to it from the inside?
Well, the secretary, while she's there.
Any of your other employees have access to the rooms in those files?
The, anything that's filed, I keep locked up, anything that is, anything that is, um, of a private nature, I keep locked up.
Why, uh, is that like locking file cabinets or?
Mm-hmm, locking file cabinet.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna err on the side of freedom here, just based on the last few weeks of people frustrated by not being able to get copies of things, and say that I, I agree with you, Tara, and your lawyer, that we, we need to do something, because people sort of having to negotiate with us to get copies of things that they should be able to get to is, is just not acceptable, so I would be in favor of, I, I think people, I'm making an assumption here, could live with knowing every week there is a small window during which they can go up there and not be hassled and not be pushed back, and to get copies of things, so I would say we err on the side of maybe less hours, so we don't stress out our budget, and just say it's gonna be like every Monday or two down, quick a day.
She, she was, uh, saying Wednesdays and Thursdays.
Well, okay, so Wednesday, so every Wednesday, so the day to come get documents is Wednesday from twelve to four, and keep it short, and start with that and see what happens.
Okay.
I would agree with that, if we fill up all the time, then we can expand it two days, but no reason to start.
I mean, I think we've had a couple of incidents recently, where people were frustrated, probably your people as well as the citizens, in their inability to get at things easily and quickly, so this should in theory eliminate that you're committing, as the owner of the room where this stuff is, that you're gonna allow access unrestricted on shepherds or whatever during those few hours, and.
She can unlock the door, and they can have, they don't have to go through the door at all, they can have, um, parking lot access, unlock the door at that time, and they, they have direct access to her office right there.
So, so does that change anybody that didn't wanna talk's desire to talk, or are you okay? Wow, I think it's just like, okay, so I, I propose a motion that we, um, post the town hall hours, which is really a closet in your building, or a room in your building, um, to be, uh, every Wednesday from twelve to four P M.
Beginning August thirty-first.
Okay, beginning August thirty-first.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jaffe, seconded by Anderson, to accept, um, the temporary town hall location with the, um, hours open to the public, Wednesdays, twelve to four, um, starting August thirty-first. All those in favor? And that passes you now. Okay, number eight, discussing consider subject tank needs, um, at the new town hall site. So, just this evening, um, was driving on, on the road and stopped, saw Mr. Killian and Mr. Bennett there, he handed this, um, paper to me, it is short and sweet, although we didn't, it says campground, community cemetery, uh, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, to the Town of Poetry, the Board of Directors has agreed to let the Town of Poetry remove the subject system behind the church, we do ask you to fill in and level the area when this is completed, Board of Directors, signed by Wesley Killian.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So it told me additionally that they voted, um, that they would not need a subject, because they don't have bathrooms there, so, um, I guess I can say that they wanna do a pavilion, but not.
Have you talked to the board about that?
So, yes, so I talked with Carl Crowe, who's the original installer originally, he said it would be four thousand, he priced additional equipment just today, he said, I'm sorry, it's gonna be more, it's gonna be sixty-five hundred, he told me that just this tank alone, if you were to buy it new today, would be nine thousand, and then additionally, it would be, I don't know how many thousand he put in, so it's still a savings, but, uh, I told him at that point, hey, that's more than, than you told us originally, I'd like to get additional quotes on that and see where that lands, so he was fine with that, and we did, Councilmember Pitts didn't take. So he was fine with that and we did, Councilmember Pitts did take the fifteen hundred dollar unit that was outside and we have that saved. So he doesn't.
The pump there.
The pump.
Would that include the building of the whole thing?
Yeah, yes. He was gonna dig the hole for the, um, new site. Get the, I guess you had to get a really big crane or something to pull that up and that was part of the additional charge. And then, um, because it's only six months old, it hasn't been used much. He said, there hasn't been a lot of rain, so I talked to Mr. Vickers, who is also, Joey Vickers, who is also, um, a septic install, installer. And he said, well, he says, good thing it's not that old. If it were old, then it would be worth it, but since it's new, he thought.
Before we run that road out, I want to ask you to ask you another guy, what are the chances of running, they break that thing down? Because if they break it, now you pay them four thousand dollars to remove it and you get to buy it.
Yeah.
And check on that equipment that you have, because if you're gonna come in for a new one, these be competitive. If it's clear string, they're not synonymous with other manufacturers and that pump might not fit the next guy's pump.
So we know we have a pump worth fifty hundred dollars and that's clear string, so that's, that's.
You need to make sure your new installer will install clear string.
That's a good point.
But I would ask them to, I don't know if they can ensure that tank or not, because once that tank gets it out there.
Well, they can certainly commit to not breaking it if they do it on them.
I don't know.
Do their own.
But definitely it gets closed. And definitely that's something that the council have to weigh because there is a risk of that.
Okay, so is, is that the same period we needed more information?
I'm calling the two months and I have another installer to assess.
So the tank is, was installed, I think, like December and then there hasn't been a lot of rain, so that's what Joey was saying.
And that's a good thing.
He said, yeah, it's really good. There hasn't been a lot of rain within the drought because the rain is what would.
But a lot of installers put up, uh, wonder how they decide after they run for twelve hours of installing, which lets all that sentence.
I don't think that happens.
You know, so is it concave or rather?
I'd have to ask.
Either way.
We, we need more information.
Yeah.
Here with the town.
We talked about it. We're very grateful to the campground for, for allowing us, so thank you very much. Okay, Robin.
All right, I'm so glad we're talking about this stuff. Um, Robin Caldwell, one zero six five eight County Route, twenty-four hundred. I'm only speaking from experience on this whole thing. I will tell you a company. I know that Terry's, Mr. Caldwell, you can check on two of them. Tri-County Septic. They're out of cattle mills. Um, I know someone that had recently something installed, brand new, whole thing. It was seventy-nine hundred dollars, two-year warranty. And Jimmy Adams, your septic engineer, he highly recommends Tri-County. So I'm just saying, him as the engineer, he knows that company very well. And like I said, I have a friend that just had to have one installed and it was, it brought it seventy-nine and that was for everything. That was them coming out the day before, doing all the digging. You need this, this, and this tree. They came out the next day, did the complete install, came out on the county, did inspection, paperwork, they serviced it for two years and then you go from there. So like I said, they're out of cattle. And that can be a good possibility on that.
Thank you. I've got that written down. So good idea. So Jim Adams did perform the septic, um, engineer. That was three hundred fifty dollars. And he did perform that, um, so we do have that septic, um.
Well, and the good thing is, like, for example, when you call Tri-County, they're gonna wanna know that you already have your engineer design. If you shoot that over to them and they're gonna see John's name on it anyways, they're gonna see that, they'll shoot you back a quote, but then I think they only do like twenty-four to forty-eight hours for their quotes. So, I mean, all I can do is just speak highly of that company when it comes to septic and aerobics.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, Chad West?
Okay.
Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith?
Yes.
Okay, that's all those subsequent comments. Um, so we just wanted to be able to talk about it, so it looks like we need to, um, go again.
Did you say you have a, uh, you have drawn a?
I do, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we, um, did it with one, one sprinkle head. And, um.
It's like a player doing one one four, not usual, when a four is loaded with water.
And we get traded in the east.
No, he had, he had the engineer one point one four. Yeah, he came out and measured and all that, so he knew it was one point one four at that point.
So are we taping this or are we just?
We just wanted to talk about it. We need to get more information, it's like, um, it sounds like Terry's gonna leave some work and I'm gonna shoot that over to Tri-County. I think that's a good suspicion, so we, I think we definitely need to get more quotes on that and considerations. All right, moving on. Uh, number ten, discuss a proposed template right-of-way agreement.
Number nine.
Number one.
Oh. Number nine. Oh, yes. Discuss and consider utility installation cost for the new town hall site. So, um, I kind of mentioned before, um, On-Or is waiting for the nine-one-one address. Now that we have, we have to get the survey, or the survey amended. There's all these steps. So survey amended, then you send it, get off for the nine-one-one address and then On-Or will act. They had our paperwork. I did shoot over, um, some of the information they were requesting, so that, as far as that utility, um, that still takes some more work. As far as the water, um, the Poetry Water Supply were very gracious and generous with us. They did donate, it's kind of like a lease on a water meter. And so again, they, they're giving that to the town free of charge. Thank you, Poetry Water Supply. Um, if the town dissolved, it would go back to them. So that is, um, something that they decided, um, to do and I think, um, let's see, on the other utilities, um, we would have to, of course, decide later, I guess, on, um, internet, um, and on that, I put two hundred dollars because a lot of them charge two hundred dollars for installation of whatever it may need. And of course, that gets involved because we do have high treaties, so we would have to get quotes and all that, so that's still, we have to have the building on site for some of that, so that's still in the, about. Any other comments or thoughts on that?
Well, it's here from the ten.
Um, Citizen?
Someone just emailed out a spreadsheet. I got it from the Citizen.
Yeah, I, we email that out?
I guess I missed that. Here, Wes, get that one?
I didn't know.
She's looking at it. Yeah, I don't, I don't recall that.
I got it from the Citizen.
I gotta get it.
Oh.
I gotta get this.
Go out. Okay, well, sorry. You wanna see it?
Teresa, could you, could you forward that to us?
We had a lot, we had like thirty-two documents, so.
Yes. The estimated cost to the Town of Poetry for the development of our town hall. Thank you.
So did you mail out with, uh, with the town that we can receive that, that water meter as a gift?
Um.
The only, the only reason I bring that up is, is we briefly talked about the work we need to job stay and, um, conflicts of interest. And I don't think it's that, but is the city in a position to be able to accept that gift because the co-op is a group of members who pay for those meters?
Well, they paid the.
Well, and maybe they did that one on too, but it gets into the quick quote quo. Could this be seen later on as, for your water needs a favor? You always want.
They donated a coffee machine as well.
I get it, but I just, do, do we just wanna ask Emily and then receive a gift of a water meter? Is that, that, I think that would be a good idea?
Okay, now I agree. Well.
And the free water to two thousand gallons per pump.
Right. I know the, um, so the nonprofit Union Valley Fire Department leases their property to the government of Union Valley. And that's a nonprofit and they actually benefit each other and there's no problem.
Yeah, I just think it's worth a quick, sure.
Okay. All right, good. I'll write it down. Any other thoughts on that? Okay, uh, utility installation costs, um, Robin?
Uh, no.
Okay, Kevin?
Pass.
Chad West?
Pass.
Tracy Smith?
Yes.
Shelley Smith?
Pass.
Patrick Smith?
Yes.
All right, so any other thoughts on that? Not that there's any action necessary, but we just want to talk about it. Okay. Um, this, number ten, discuss a proposed template right-of-way agreement. Um, this was like thirty-seven pages or something, thirty-nine, thirty-nine pages. We just wanted to get, go ahead.
I introduced this, uh, my, my original language that I suggested was to introduce and discuss the backwater right-of-way language for future consideration. But, um, basically, I just wanted to get this out in front of the public, so people and the council, so we can review it and talk about it in the future. I don't expect anybody to absorb thirty-nine pages right now and then come back and be able to speak intelligently about it.
This is your arena, right?
No.
No?
It's not really in my arena, but, uh, the, the original right-of-way only addressed one particular portion of one telecom, um, mechanism. So, um, I, I went and researched from a broader scope. This leans, this thing very heavily on the city of Dune. Um, I, I was collecting phrases and ideas that I liked from others and then I stumbled across the city of Dune and I was like, wow, you're covering everything. So, um, I, I heavily, uh, moderately edited theirs to fit poetry. Um, but, I mean, it's, it's been vetted by their attorney, not ours. Um, but I think it's a good place for us to start the discussion. It's probably still needs to have some edits to get tweaked specifically for us. But again, I didn't want us to try to pass it tonight. That's why I didn't want it as an ordinance at this point, so that we couldn't actually pass it.
I'm still a paid one, so.
I, I've read it a few times and, yeah, it's, it's good for insomnia.
Not, not. We're preventing the evening. All right, uh, Robin Caldwell, would you like to speak?
No, I'll pass.
Kevin, thank you for the. Sorry. Uh, Chad West?
Pass.
Shelley Smith, pass. Chad West, pass. Uh, any comments by councilmen? So we have this book to study. Um, I think, um, I think it's good we give it some time to digest and maybe look at it in a future meeting. Is that acceptable? Okay. All right, eleven, discuss and consider electing Mayor Proten during the expiry date of twenty twenty-three. Currently, we have Mayor Proten, um, Anderson. I will say that he's, um, been very, um, helpful and attentive, attending all the classes, um, probably, we've attended probably sixty hours of classes. He's, he's retired engineer and so he's, but he has the time and it, it does require more than, you know, just someone who will fill in in case I'm sick or something, but, um, so I do appreciate, um, his attendance, his dog in the spot attitude, you know, to be available, um, for various things. Um, whether it's, you know, being at the new town hall site or being out there today or doing all kinds of things. Um, so I just wanted to say that I really appreciate that of him.
I'll say if any one of you guys wanna volunteer or unvolunteer.
But you'd have to attend a lot of those.
Yeah.
Probably, yeah, it's like sixty hours probably.
Okay, so I, I missed a transition somewhere. So Tom, you're stepping down?
No, the, the term is only for one year and so we have to go on again, like every year. You have to go on, so.
Oh, so we should have fired Tom a long time ago.
Probably.
So the term expires every, um, like it expires every June, so we probably should have already addressed it.
Ah, okay.
Just remembering that, that it's only one year term.
Well, Mike can volunteer most times, so I'll make, I'll volunteer. I'll make a motion if Tom makes.
Let's, let's hear it from the town.
All right, all right. Um, Robin?
Robin Caldwell, one zero six five eight County Road Turn four hundred. So I guess my question on this is, so do we get to like nominate one? Do we have a say so in that or is that just strictly y'all? I'm just curious.
Well, the council votes on it, but you can say your case.
Well, no, I mean, I just didn't know like before, like when y'all did it before, did you, one person selected and then you all voted on it? Or someone said, I wanna do that, I wanna do it, and then you pick between the two? How was it really, how is, or how do y'all really determine?
Well, last year, the way it was done, we had two nominations and then we voted on each one. So this year, I mean, I, I think they wanted to nominate this guy again, so I was just, yeah.
New procedures for me.
New procedures for me.
We just do Tom again.
So did you have a suggestion?
No, I was just, this was something new. I mean, I said, I guess it's a smaller thing. It's not, we don't have that format. So that's why I was just curious who actually picks it, nominates it, and if the citizens did or didn't have the rules.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, it was Jaffe and Howard nominated this guy, uh, Anderson, and then I believe Vincent nominated.
Cindy Anne.
Cindy Anne, and then we voted and it ended up. Okay. All right, Chad West? Mike Griffin?
Okay.
Um, Shelley Smith?
Yes.
Patrick Smith?
Yes.
All right, so are there any other nominations besides that's been thrown out there of Tom Anderson?
We've been nominated.
I would be willing to. Um, it's not like I'm shocked about the bits, but if it's something you all want me to do, I'd be willing to do it, but Mr. Tom Anderson wants to continue to take care of that and I certainly don't have any objections.
We spent a lot of time grooming Tom.
There has been an awful lot of them.
I feel like he deserves at least one more turn as well. I nominate Tom.
Well, I think you're pretty pre-registered for the.
Oh.
Yeah, you're pretty pre-registered for the, what, some other meeting, emergency meeting. So, um, okay, so we have a nomination of, um, Tom Anderson for Mayor Proten. Um, and I think Cindy Anne also, do we have a vote? Um, so for all of those who?
I'm, I'm not gonna, do you wanna, uh, I haven't heard, Mr. Anderson, you wanna be Mayor Proten again?
Cut his headphones off, Kevin.
No, that's fine.
It's, you're, you're fine with it?
Yeah, I'm good. All right.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, all those in favor of Mayor Proten, um, we've spotted for council member Tom Anderson, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously.
Good job, Tom.
He has a good job, I think. We don't have to always agree, but I really appreciate it.
Well, just avoiding the next trend alone. Took them a long time to get that done.
Who seconded that?
Um.
I'll second her.
Okay, thank you.
You proposed it.
But you motioned.
Oh, all right.
Okay, let's start this correctly. Okay, so we have a motion by Jaffe and seconded by White to nominate Tom Anderson for Mayor Proten through June twenty twenty-three. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously.
What do you think of your move like in my assist?
Well, that was my question. I told her, you know, um, the term ended in D.
That was.
I guess you want back. And that's what she used on the language and I thought that was odd, but that's what she did. All right, so twelve, discuss and consider the town budget for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. So as my job requirement states, um, I attempted that, um, and so we have operating budget number one. So in this, I'll kind of explain, I did make some changes from last year's way it was slotted and I thought, you know, last year, we, uh, it was kind of just a guess. Um, we had no idea, um, what, what to expect because, you know, we didn't have a crystal ball. So we have a little more information to go on this year. So we have, um, here, um, at the top, we don't know, um, the sales tax revenue. We know that, um, it did pass overwhelmingly last November. Um, unfortunately, you have to do that again. Um, but towns, our sites typically see between one thirty. to do that again, um, but towns, our sides typically see between one hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars per year in revenues. Now, granted, ours is one and a half percent, all slotted for the roads, uh, if it passed, then we would only have a six-month, so kind of just took a really conservative view on that. But again, a hundred percent of that has to go for roads, so the way that I tried to manage it, is I would make sure that regardless of this slot of roads, we spend a hundred thousand on that for roads, so you'll see, I've made that in kind of that pink color, and, um, so I'll put down below, road repair and maintenance, forty-five thousand dollars, and then you see on the, on the additional page, I have E two is road repair and maintenance. So for cobbler repair and edifying, um, slotted twelve thousand dollars, for savings for road reperishment for that total overhaul, um, thirty-three thousand dollars. Now, if for some reason we didn't get a dime of that, we would still have enough in our regular budget for that cobbler repair, but I wanted to make sure that we have it designated, um, for that, and after talking with a couple C P A's who do audits, then we want to make sure we do that as well. Um, so franchise fees, electric, um, we estimate they're about eighty thousand dollars per year, but back off of that for five thousand, in case we do have some errors that we need to correct, um, and as you see, um, with, um, or on, or would reimburse the citizen, and then we would reimburse the utility company, if that were the case, if that were the case. On trash, franchise fees, we estimate thirty-four thousand, um, that's based on the data that we currently have, so that gives us a general fund revenue of a hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, so you look under expenses, salary as to the secretary is slotted at ten thousand five hundred this past year, of course, we didn't have a secretary for what, three months? So we saved a lot of that money, which actually taught us financially, it nearly killed me, but it's pretty good. So the service supplies, we have an E one, so you look on the second page, and E one is combined, is a combined of office supplies, paper, postage, you'll see, I came down on that, and it was five hundred, now we're going to go to three hundred, because we don't have the expenses of printing a thousand and sixty copies of a newsletter, plus we recognize our foster, probably could be a little less. Utilities, um, that's, we don't have water, we still have electric, um, that little building, you know, is that you have to turn it on twenty-four hours in advance to keep it, keep it decent temperature, hot, in hot temperatures. Um, building insurance, I'm still trying to get quotes on that, but, um, the one that I got was around eight hundred, um, so, um, that's still in the works. T and L insurance, we already know that's eleven hundred dollars, that's included in cyber protection, um, and so that was a total of thirteen thousand two hundred and forty. Uh, as I mentioned, the E two was forty-five thousand dollars in road repair and maintenance. Um, E three is information and technology, so we, we were able to buy quite a few things, um, the audio equipment that you're seeing, we actually all each have a microphone, we're not sharing it like we were before, so we don't have to buy that again, so that's nice. Um, the internet, the monthly bill is around eighty, we think, now again, we'll know more here soon, the website, we already know that's nineteen dollars and forty-eight cents per month. Uh, the calendar, that allows the week's website upgrade, allows us to be a little more on the, on the website. The emails, we have seven existing emails, that all has to be, the, the type of email that is securely protected and doesn't allow for it to be erased, um, according to government code, so that's why that is kind of high. Um, the domain renewal charge is just fourteen dollars. IT maintenance, that's for like, um, just upgrading, like anything that might break, that kind of thing, is, um, slotted at nine, nine hundred. Um, this likes equipment, I just put in that, because there's always something that seems to be an electronic state, that busts, right? Um, a host for phones, I put that at thirteen dollars, uh, a month, that's a hundred fifty-six dollars a year, that's using a Wi-Fi type-based phone. Um, telephones, that's a physical phone, we might have to be, buy two of those, um, maybe a hundred fifty dollars each, um, we don't have, you know, I have a cell phone I've been using, but the town hall will need like a physical phone. Um, the SIP for phones, I'm not going to even, um, pretend I don't even know what that is, but that's something Josh said we needed, uh, two hundred forty dollars a year, alarm relay, um, that's a hundred sixty-eight dollars a year, that's for the security system, um, the backup server, a four hundred twenty dollars, so that's a total of five thousand thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents for information and technology, that's actually less than we had last year. Um, so, back to pay this, this page, um, you can see that's what all of my, we put our legal fees, um, again, we didn't know exactly what we were going to spend on legal fees, um, we still don't know exactly, but we know that, um, not having an attorney here, you know, we have her, we called in for the executive meeting, but just not having them in here says thousands, that was our biggest expense, and I think we learned, you know, we just got our first bill in March, so we didn't really, and they wrote off all of last year, so that was a gift to us, but, um, we're still learning, and we're still trying to figure out, um, how to best minimize those costs, put that at forty-five thousand. Education, we, um, don't have a lot of, uh, time to go off to various cities and get the education, but it is nice, City Secretary will have to attend some classes, so I put that, I just totally reduced that to nine hundred. The first annual audit, we did get a quote for four thousand dollars, another quote for White was a little higher than that, so I kept it at the lower one, um, four thousand. Survey engineers, about twenty-five hundred, and one of the attorneys did say that we would need, he said, you know, you guys need to hire an engineer and really get a good engineering map, that was his, that was Andy Messers, um, and he actually sent a guy, so we need to have something in there. Miss Salanius, twenty-five hundred, who's kind of a, um, buffer there, grounds and building care, and so for lawn care and maintenance, um, two hundred a month, lawn care, in the heat of the broad season, would be, you know, maybe what, a hundred and sixty, but then, like if the building need new air filters and all kinds of things, I just put that at twenty-four hundred. Election cost, um, I put that at sixty-five hundred, now that may, I was forgetting about the next year's election, so we might have to up that. Um, and the, the May election is supposed to be less, but we don't have any figures yet on that, so that will need to be up that department. A rainy day fund, T and L suggests twenty-five to thirty percent, um, on that rainy day fund. The current amount that we have here is ten point one percent, that's fifteen thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents, because I just basically, even like I left that right just a foot in there. So, um, I hope that sort of explains my thoughts.
Is any of my role from this year related to this operating budget? Because right now, we have fifty-six thousand dollars remaining.
Jerry, can you speak in the microphone, please?
Sorry, I've gone over. I was asking, right now, we have fifty-six thousand dollars remaining, and if that need to be relevant to this proposed operating budget?
That's a good question for the C P A, and next month, we'll have, um, some quotes from some CPAs, so, um, we can certainly ask, that's a good question.
I'm glad you brought up office supplies earlier, that you changed it from five hundred to three hundred, because the per month and per year don't add up, that three hundred for twelve months is three thousand six hundred, and we have listed six thousand, so there's some extra money. No, I was wondering, I thought, is there eighty more months in this year that kind of slipped past me?
I'll fix that.
I mean, you could probably move that to the option.
Certainly six hundred, and we're here to amend it, you know, we're here to talk about it, this is just the first shot, this is number one, this is the first shot, so thing that you put up. Now, we know, um, on the election, we know the ballot being ordered, um, so, since we have.
Top, towards our day, this needs to be improved by?
Well, a lot of it depends on if you have property taxes, we have a different property tax, so, but we do need to have it, it has to, we'll find it by September or something.
It needs to be adjusted, and it needs to, right?
It does, and I was talking to him about that, she said, well, we're going to set the election and the budget at the same time as they like in the newspaper, so.
So, Jimmy, are you suggesting that thirty-six hundred dollars won't do with the rest of the twenty-four hundred remaining? Is that, I would like to put in election costs, because, um, I understand some elections.
I agree with that, I think some of the, the role of when I go to election costs as well, but, uh, if possible, if possible, I'd like for us to keep our annual operating costs within our annual, uh, income, so, um, yeah, I, I wouldn't want to earmark that for anything unless we absolutely, I wouldn't want to earmark it for anything, and then we'll have it if we absolutely need for something else.
So, what do you want, what?
In the rainy, rainy day.
So, we do need to up our election cost, um, I mean, we know that it was last year, um, just for one election for both counties, it was five hundred and fif, five hundred fifty dollars plus the invoice that we just approved paying tonight of forty-five hundred, um, so it's five thousand and fifty dollars approximately, so if we have another, if we have two elections, one in November and one in May, then we have to look at that as pretty costly, so do we need to up that to ten thousand?
You, you may have already mentioned this earlier, Tara, but we, can we ask the Hunt County Elections people to give us an estimate of the upcoming election cost? I mean, they kind of know how many people are participating.
For the next May?
No, November.
Yeah, no, I've asked, a lot of people have asked, but they haven't.
And they, and they, they should send someone, send one of those emails, once they get everybody's files, one election everyone has, will give you a basic cost.
Okay.
Right, and they.
That does help us with forecasting.
No, and I did call them again, hey, do you have an estimate? And they're like, no, not yet, we don't know until the end of March, and stuff, they'll know the deadline, for one of the deadlines is this, on Monday, so they'll know a little bit after Monday, a little bit more.
So, if we bump that up to ten thousand for the election cost, that just puts us right over eleven thousand, or maybe eight hundred, because that's what we have to come out of, right?
So, if we add twenty, uh, twenty-four hundred to that, so fifteen.
Yeah, we're, we're going to ten thousand, we started with sixty-five hundred. So, we're gonna have to.
She's saying you have to go somewhere in the office.
You have to add four hundred dollars to the revenue from your office.
So, if you added that twenty-four hundred to the current election, that'd bring you to eight nine hundred. If you wanted ten thousand, you'd have to bring in another eleven hundred dollars that they get rainy day cost. If, if that's what you wish to have it at ten thousand. I'm okay with eight nine hundred.
Thanks.
I'm okay with leaving it at eight nine hundred, just moving the twenty-four hundred from service and supply.
Fine, I am too, because they did say the May, May election is last. Good, it's still.
But you also need to make the dividend on this, on the expenses to make that line out, and you want for ten thousand eight hundred and forty dollars to reflect the balance of the year.
Sid, does anyone else have any thoughts on that? All right, how about any citizens, citizens, Robin?
Robin, call one zero six five eight, county road twenty-four hundred. Okay, so I know y'all were just taking something from the office supply, and it's only speaking for this budget going forward. You're not going to be able to cut your office supply for six from six thousand, you're moving the building, you're going to have to have new furniture, stuff to go in that, that's going to have to come out of your office supply budget for this budget year. And supplying a new off, basically, the building with furniture, once it's moved and everything, it's pretty costly, you're going to easily spend four thousand, six thousand almost alone in office furniture for that building, to do the frying, build office, if you're going with all new furniture, so I'm just.
If we went with new.
I'm just saying, you can't just cut that down, because you're going to be now furnishing that whole town hall.
So, that's a, a valid point, um, however, we do have, um, and I love seeing the, the town hall, the annex, we were donated by Cochrane School, and I did not have the table, it is.
She was there last year.
We, you were there.
Yeah, I was there.
And the chairs, um, we do have, um, one desk, we might need to purchase another, or unless there's a donor somewhere, I'm, I'm all about, like, donations, so we had a beautiful desk donated by a citizen, um, and we had a computer, actually, donated the money for a new computer donated, but, um, we have some wood ladder piles, two of them, huge, that were donated, and last year, we just kind of applied to put it, so we have had some significant donations, not to say that we wouldn't, that's a good point, we, um, that I'm all about, like, let's get it used, or let's get it, you know, as inexpensive as possible, but there might be something that we can, or like, if we start having town halls there somewhere else, then, you know, I don't know about, you're going to have chairs, and you're, you're wanting this moved, and as a, an official, you know, town hall, then it's going to need some perks, and they've got to figure that in the budget now, because it's going to come out in, just like everything else, office furniture and supplies have went through the roof. So, I'm just saying, don't cut that office supply budget down too low, because you will be really surprised how much of it you're going to spend once the new town hall gets. I'm just doing a quick calculation, so if we bought twenty fold-up chairs, that's about a thousand dollars, um, and that's just chairs, that's a chair, and I mean, you know, we have a smaller meeting there, and of course, with the, a number of people we have tonight, would absolutely, we're slotted for forty-one at the, the town hall, I think that would actually be who we'd fit.
Or, yeah, we wouldn't have to.
People come in during the office hours, you know, if you wanted to meet, she's going to have her, unless they've got to have somewhere to sit, they've got to have a desk to feel they can work out, and if they're requesting open records, so either we're going to have to get lucky enough to get all that donated, or we're going to have, it's going to have to come out of the budget. We did have at the flea market last year, we had some chairs that I was wanting to get re, like, repolster, um, they were kind of cool, lay-out comfortable, so it's kind of working that we can just repolster, get them something. You know, as a founder of the school, I saw how Anne rented it, and I was like, wow, she's smart, she got, she got all the furniture for the whole school, like pennies on the dollar, and opened the school with no, like, no debt, so I saw how she did it, so it can be done, but I do agree with you, there does need to be something in there for that, because I, I do not think it's that, and, and that, you're absolutely right. Thank you.
Kevin, see? Chad.
Did we issue the seventy-four hundred dollars in change to payment to Messer?
Yes.
So, I guess this is addressed to comment that Mr. Fowler made, just to correct you, you don't have fifty-six thousand dollars, you've got seventy-four hundred dollars in change already, if, if accounts payable, you agreed to spend forty-five hundred dollars to pay Hunt County, and then how much do we have to haul? A total of those eighteen hundred dollars plus seven, that's twenty-five hundred dollars.
He knows, he, he is owed eighteen hundred and fifteen dollars.
So, I, I guess my question is, if I was watching QuickBooks, from this standpoint of can we get beyond just putting up any bank statement, because you've got money that you've already spent, that we're inflating what it is that we have left to spend.
So, you, good point, we, um, Secretary Teresa has already entered every month in QuickBooks, gotten everything up today, we do have actually a profit and loss here, um, from QuickBooks, so I'm glad to have that, um, so kudos to her, she's worked like crazy to get all that done, I'm very grateful for that, so we do have that, and the council members actually have a copy of that, I'm not sure that's in a packet or not.
It wasn't packaged, it turned out to be right, about twenty-eight K.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-eight K.
Yes, and so the problem with this profit loss is not really reflected, because we, we only had half a year on some of this, so it's, to me, it's not real accurate in the fact that it doesn't portray things for an entire year, even though it says.
I understand, but it does get an accurate portrayal of how much money you currently have remade, if it's not earmarked for payment.
Sure, so it does say twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars.
And so, anything that's going to happen for our roads in the next fiscal budget is dependent on the sales tax revenue, and we're planning to spend twelve thousand dollars in actual repairs and save thirty-three thousand dollars for future use.
Now, that's for right now, we, if, if our income is exceeding that, then we can add to that.
But as this states right now, we'll spend twelve thousand dollars repairing roads next year.
Well, we only spent thus far, um, we've only spent, um, what's less than. Well, we only spent thus far, we've only spent, well, it's less than, it's like, let's see, eighteen hundred. We've only, we've spent less than like seven dollars right now.
So I guess, and I've asked this one before, challenge counsel, is what is the long-term plan to actually fix the roads? That's part of what I really incorporated to begin with. You're talking about going beyond the potholes? You're talking about actually to fix the Hunt County portion of the Lehigh Road? How are we going to repay the research and stuff?
A lot of it is going to be dependent on whether or not the sales tax passes. I think it goes beyond the sales tax.
There's some, there's some services, like TML just suggested one that creates up the roads and uses that as a foundation, which can save a lot. So I'm sure we'll research into something like that more and save some money.
I guess the question that I have out there is we've got twenty-six miles of road. Ten and a quarter miles of road are maintained by textile. So you've got the remainder amount of roads, back in May, we went through and we talked about concrete base, double chip seal lasts five years. Take three roads, divide by five, it's roughly three and change. And it costs a hundred fifty thousand dollars a mile.
Well, actually, the cost of, that Aaron Conway, the supervisor for Kaufman County, said, you can get a double chip sealed road with a concrete base that lasts five to seven years for seventy-five thousand.
But the expert that we brought in, we talked to every citizen in this council, said the chief said that's a hundred fifty one and seven.
Well, Aaron Conway works for the counties, and I've also got another bid, another quote, but it was seventy-five thousand. So the hundred fifty, I think, was inflated.
So either way, we have to come up with two hundred and ten, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Not necessarily per year. You rotate, even the counties do that. You rotate.
The roads last five years, that's what we stated in the May.
Five to seven. If you do it, now see that the county was doing, they were only doing a single chip sealed road, and it was lasting two years. So if you wanted it to last longer, you would use a concrete base with a double chip seal and a seventy-five thousand dollars per mile. And, you know, it did last five to seven years, so you just rotate. And so that's where the savings is very important.
I understand, but if you've got three plus five also roads, times seventy-five, you have to have two hundred and twenty-five thousand to get started on thirty-five, any amount of roads. Even to get into the cycle. And then even if you do it on a three or a five year or a seven year, whatever it is, that's where you start with the number. And then you just continue to do three. And then every seven years, you spend that same amount of money.
Right, absolutely.
So I guess.
So again, tall tea gives two hundred thousand dollars in revenues, and it's an unknown. We won't know until we get there. We don't have a crystal ball. But all we know is that towns our size get anywhere between a hundred and fifty to over two hundred thousand per year in sales tax revenue. And really, in our town, you know, we do, they did say we have around thirty businesses, but we won't know until we get there. Chad, you far?
Chad McFarlane, one nine eight five oh, FM nine eighty-six. I guess as Chad's take delight, my questions are about the roads as well. You have forty-five thousand dollars agreed to for road repair and maintenance. Twelve thousand dollars for pothole repair and cleanup. So in my understanding, just understanding, the only money you're budgeting to actually spend next year is twelve thousand dollars for road repair, based on this company?
Yes.
Okay, so thousand dollars a month to maintain twenty-four miles of roads?
We're a baby town, and we're, it takes us from, yeah.
I'm just trying to verify numbers.
Yeah, now, now we didn't spend anywhere near that this year. So is, if there's any extra, that could also go with that savings plan.
So even at twenty-four miles of road, we're getting about five hundred dollars a mile. Add another, you know, even if you double that, that's a thousand dollars a mile. That's not much repair.
Remember.
Seventy-five, I'm, I'm speaking, please. Seventy-five thousand dollars a mile to redo the roads. You've got thirty-three thousand dollars to set aside for road refurbishment. That's less than half a mile, so.
So you recognize, and it's not twenty-six four miles that we have, text, uh?
Twenty, twenty-four miles of county road.
No, that's not correct.
So tell me, how many miles of county roads are, are formerly county roads?
Formerly county roads, so we have, I'll have to revisit that.
So you can tell me on wrong, but you can't tell me with right.
I just want to make sure I get that right. And I was trying to, basically to progress, just to make sure I said that right.
Okay.
All right. Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith?
Do you want to pick your process of voting on the road repairs before what I pointed out to you about, I think, the road repair? In, in any particular of our roads, Kevin's come out and said, there is a huge pothole in the road. They said they're going to come back and put a rock in it, then cap it. It wasn't in the bid, and that's got to be more money or something like that.
No, okay, so when we voted for the project sheet, we voted for new asphalt. So that's your road, I didn't actually drive your road. So if, I didn't recognize that there was an eight-foot area that needed gravel, so we only put on new asphalt. So he obviously didn't have on the project sheet, that's us.
And gave a surprise, no?
No, he, he didn't look at all of them, no, he didn't look at it.
I was under the, I was under the impression that he drives the roads and gives a surprise.
Well, he, so I texted him the roads, and then he looked at the mileage, and he looked at the, the road reports that were put on that, and then he gave us a.
So we need to be more specific about that. But besides, I had drove all the other roads. I think they're lacking in repairing the sides. And I think if we continue not to address that, we're going to end up with twenty-foot roads that go to eighteen to sixteen to barely pass.
Hey, Liam? So yes, I agree, but we're kind of talking on budget, but yes, I agree.
But that's a budget item that we need to run our potholes there.
Well, we, again, we only spent less than seven thousand this year, but, you know, that's something to consider. But yes, some roads, they did cover the, the sides, and some roads they didn't, and made them a different crew. We talked about that, but yeah, we'll definitely.
If it's going to be an additional expense, that's all the math.
I don't, I think.
Or it's going to be a better management job.
I mean, we're not going to approve this tonight, so can we just ask them what their thoughts on how much more it would be? Because we know how much we're spending now, so, I mean, evidence of being, you know, something surprising. Although like an extra five thousand dollars to get the sides, I mean, that'd be very surprising. We could pull that out rainy day or something like that.
So.
Not that we want to necessarily.
Just to the point of, we're, we're into eleven o'clock at night?
Yeah, and this is a budget item, but yeah, I think we need some more research on that. All right, so. The roads have been inconsistent, so there's some roads, they do cover the sides and some roads they don't. We're going to specify, please cover the sides, and then adjust your quote that you give to us ahead of time, knowing that.
Yeah, I think to your point, Tar, because this twenty-three, twenty-six is fastly becoming a single-lane road. Because the edges, so we probably should specify in our work orders that we like them to include as much of the edge. At some point, it's going to be a losing battle, because so much of the pavement is going to disappear. But if they would at least try.
Well, I will say, we've heard from a number of citizens that the roads seem to be better than they have been a number of years. So we've had some positive feedback, actually, on the county roads. Some of you live on state roads, state, state cap roads, you haven't had to deal with all of that. But we've had some really nice citizen comments, like, you know, that they have been much improved. So we're grateful for that. All right, so as far as the budget goes, any other thoughts on that? Then just tell me what you want. Do you, do you all want to go ahead and make the, the election cost eighty-nine hundred, taking it out of office? Or to Robin Folow's point, do we want to maybe have at least some money for furniture that we, we will need some?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to get the math correct on it, but leave it there.
Leave it six thousand?
Yeah.
So we can take off the three hundred per month and leave six thousand?
Well, it's five hundred per month, and it's six thousand.
So we can just leave all of it per month and allow for furniture in there, furnishings? I mean, I'm all about getting three hundred if we can, but, you know, fold-up chairs, sometimes it's.